Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the September 11th meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. Established in 1956, Arlington County Planning Commission is a citizen advisory body authorized by the Virginia State Code. Its members are appointed by the Arlington County Board. The Planning Commission promotes the orderly development of Arlington County and its inverens by advising the county board on development, use of land, public facilities, and zoning. Tonight, the Planning Commission will be discussing the requests for rezoning, site plan amendment, and use permit amendment requested by Virginia Hospital Center and reviewed by the SPRC. With regard to these requests, on September 6th, the Planning Commission heard a staff report, applicant presentation, and advice from Parks and Rec Commission and Transportation Commission. The Commission also took public testimony from, I believe, 18 citizens, including representatives from three civic associations neighboring the site, the Community Service Board, employees of Virginia Hospital Center, and other Arlington citizens. Individual commissioners also posed approximately 20 questions at the end of that meeting, which we will revisit this evening. The Commission tonight will not take any further public testimony. The matter is now fully with the Commission. We will be doing the Salt Dome on Thursday night. I was just advised that there might be some confusion about that, so just to be clear, if anybody is here for that issue, please come back on Thursday. Tonight, we will have a report from Commissioners Yakimini and Lantelme, who co-chaired the Virginia Hospital Center SPRC, covering six SPRC meetings that were held in connection with the requests that I mentioned. The co-chairs have also provided the Commission with a set of discussion items that will form the basis of our agenda tonight. Items that include Commissioners' questions that were posed on September 6th. Please note that all Planning Commission meetings are audio and video taped. You can find past meetings, including the September 6th meeting, on the county's website. Please turn off all cell phones, and if you could keep them away from microphones, that would be great because we can have some, we can get feedback. Sorry, I hope you can hear me now. So, I will now turn to Commissioner Yakimini for her report, offered as a way to better understand the site, the Edison site, and discuss outstanding issues. I just want to point out that there are 11 groups of issues in our discussion agenda, and I'm proposing to my fellow commissioners that we take no more than 15 minutes for each group of issues, so we have time to get to motions. Commissioners, of course, can add topics to each group as each group is discussed. I think that might be the best way to proceed. So, Commissioner Yakimini.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Welcome, everyone, to our second evening, and I want to thank everyone that came and spoke at our meeting last Thursday. I think it was, it was very helpful to, for us, I believe, to separate out the testimony night and then our discussion night, and so we were able to give staff and the applicant some homework so that questions didn't come as a surprise. But because we had that evening, I don't want to spend a lot of time giving an SP, a huge, long SPRC report. There's written copies that my colleagues have. So, I just want to talk a little bit, as we said that there were several SPRC meetings held, plus a walking tour and community open houses, so we've all been together many times talking about this subject. The planning guidance for this particular site, I think we've, we've heard from staff, really is contained in the GLUP and the zoning category of SD. Unlike sites in our development corridors, there were, there was not another document between those sort of overarching policy and regulatory code and, and what was going to be proposed literally on the ground. So, as we know, in the Roslyn-Bolston corridor and Crystal City, we have sector plans that are really helpful. They talk about traffic, they talk about placement of buildings, they talk about expectations for height, they talk just generally how to arrange the density in a particular area that helps, helps us when we come to each site. We also have what we call Phase Development Site Plans, PDSPs. One in Roslyn, and certainly all of Pentagon City is actually covered by a PDSP, unlike sort of one of our unusual ones. And that type of document gives that other, gives that same sort of, more of a finer grain than that we see just in a comprehensive GLUP category, or even in the zoning code. But we did not have that for this site. I think that sort of was, was a little bit of an issue of planning equity, that I kept wondering why didn't the SPRC feel right? And it was, I think, because we weren't working from a PDSP or a sector plan. That helped us think about how structures and massing and open space and access points were going to be arranged as the Edison site got attached to the rest of the hospital campus. I mean, it's, I'm pleased that we have a, the applicant's vision for 20 years that came to us after the SPRC process, but it is, again, their vision. It's not a shared document, it's not something that staff has evaluated, that citizens have worked on, it's, it's a piece of it, but it's not the whole thing. So, I just say that, you know, sort of, if you want, if we all wonder why we had our general, the biggest consensus at SPRC was an unease with the whole project, I think that's why. It's just, it's in a different place, it wasn't governed by the same things. We didn't have, we as the Plannings, Commission, staff, other Commissions, and the applicant have the wisdom and the backing of some of these other planning things that could have happened to help us. And I'm sure such a document would have been of help to the hospital while it was thinking about, gosh, we, there's all these things we need to do on this site, and I wonder how we can fit them. And they sort of came up with their own answer, rather than a collective answer. I think that was one of the breakdowns that happened, and it's made it, made it difficult, I think, for all of us at this stage. So, as I said, our greatest consensus was that we had unease with the entire project. We, we did all agree that no one expected the hospital not to be on the site, and in fact, it just was a no-brainer that the Edison site would have been requested by the hospital. And I think all of us thought the hospital needs to be the best hospital it can, it serves all of us, and we don't have as many people here this evening, but, you know, who all has had relatives, close relatives, even household family, who have been at Arlington Hospital in the last year? I think, see, there's, there's quite a few of us, and, and I treasure the emergency room, and, and have had my husband be there three times in the first quarter, and, and certainly have sat at the bedside of a, of a dear friend who, who passed away there this spring. So, it's not a question of if, it's a question of how. And that's what SPRC kept grappling with. We did have consensus that the current access points and policies should remain, that is, no truck access from North Edison, and employee-only access on Edison. There was a general consensus that the materials being proposed and the architecture were of a high quality. There still was a question about the massing, but I think people felt generally pretty good about what we were being shown. There was also the consensus that we should have a longer plan, and indeed, the applicant did give us one subsequent to the SPRC. But again, it is their vision for that site, not a shared vision. SPRC consensus was that the proposal didn't appear to comport with the requirements laid out in the SD zoning. It still retains some of the greatest heights at the edges of the Edison site, rather than moving them towards the interior. I know we talk a lot about moving, we've heard testimony about moving the density into the interior, and that's not, I think, quite what SPRC was getting at. It's not that there should be nothing on the edges, I think it was more about there should be height, but the greatest height is reserved for closer to the interior of the site, whereas four to six stories on the edges could make sense with the proper The county does have a policy of discouraging the construction of above-grade garages, and the applicant has put space underground, although not using the whole site. And we did manage to get the, a lot of the, what, 30% of the parking that's above ground reduced, so that is a help from that. As I said, the applicant was responsive and lowered the proposed height of the garage. It's gone from eight levels of 90 feet to six levels of 67 feet. The outpatient building, however, seems, it's at its greatest point, is still at least 95 feet, and I'm not sure, we'll learn later what it is with the penthouse. And that 95 feet is the maximum, actually, for this site, by code, by zoning code. We know that with bonuses, it can go a little higher. In most of our planning exercises, we do have sites that taper downwards towards residential uses. And again, I talked about that, that it's not necessarily zero, as, as the taper, but it's, it's not 95 feet. For transportation and, oh, also, we noted the contiguous massing of the garage and the outpatient building that really forms an L-shaped wall at Edison and North 19th Street, that there is no break in there, and what's there now, aging buildings, no question, probably not dearly loved by anyone, but they are lower, and we couldn't necessarily expect those one- and two-story buildings again, but there is a campus there that feels very open and permeable from people in the neighborhood through the site, and from people on George Mason back through the site, and well, as well as circulation of visitors and staff at the hospital. We felt that that contiguous wall there was something that really broke that, and hadn't been necessarily an expectation of ours. Parking, we've mentioned that the applicant has reduced it, and they do have a robust TDM. Our friends at Transportation Commission have already recommended that, that those comport with, with their expectations. We've also heard from the community and at SPRC that there was a great unease with a lot of parking on the site, given our county policies. Access on North George Mason Drive was another issue. SPRC grappled with that, initially, there were two new entrances, SPRC asked for them to be consolidated, but the proposed signalization for their single entry, and where their single entry is, is actually in the middle of the block and not at North 17th Street. And I think we all usually experience four-corner intersections, right? There's, there's two streets that cross, rather than one street and a, and a stub, and having a lighted intersection at a single-family home. A situation that does currently exist on George Mason for a hospital access, not necessarily something that should be replicated. Staff did come up with an alternate proposal that did have the access point at 17th Street North, and stated that they felt that it would work as well as the applicant's proposal, and the applicant did not agree because of how they wish to have the traffic organized on their site. So, while our staff is recommending North 17th Street as an intersection, that is not what we see before us this evening. There had been a discussion about adding sidewalk to the nor, to the east side of North Edison Street. That is something that I think we've, through SPRC, we wanted to know from the neighborhood if they, how they felt about that. I believe where we came out is that, particularly at the community meetings, that the neighborhood was, had a consensus for adding that sidewalk, the width of which would come out of actually the hospital's site, so that no single-family home would lose frontage, because some of them are very close to the street, having been developed, you know, decades ago. So, the road would shift more into the hospital site, and there still would retain some on-street parking on Edison, which people have found to be very beneficial. For architecture, comments were made about the facade of the outpatient pavilion along 19th Street North that might need to make it more inviting and compatible with the single-family homes. We know there is a step down there, but there is this ribbon of windows that is just very institutional-looking in a single-family neighborhood. Landscaping in open space was a very big discussion as well. People noted, SPRC members noted that the, there's a lot of landscaping around the perimeter of the site, in the southern part of the site, and they hope for the same thing in the northern part. It was, the setbacks are not as generous to the north on the structures as they are to the south. It was difficult to come to a consensus about should there be berms, not berms, what kind of trees. We did hear from a speaker on Thursday who felt that we needed to focus more on native species, but I, I think the applicant was willing to work with it, they sort of wanted to know what to do with it, and it was very difficult for SPRC to give guidance because we were all still struggling with the setbacks and the massing on the site. So, it was how to work the landscape with massing that you're not really comfortable with, so it was hard to give an answer about the landscaping. During SPRC, the neighborhood mentioned many times about the state of the current loading dock in the waste management area, and at the last meeting, SPRC meeting, the applicant indicated that they would indeed be willing to screen that and work on this longstanding issue, and would even try to have had it done by the end of the summer, but thwarted by our own zoning code, where the kind of enclosure that they need is not permitted in the zone in which they are, and since they're under a site plan, they don't go to BZA, they have to get a site plan amendment. So, that is part of the package that staff has put forward. So, those are just some of the highlights. I think another thing that, that came up a little bit at SPRC, and somewhat more at the community meetings, was even talking more about the garage access that is on 19th Street North, that there is an entrance there that is for employees only, the garage is, is separated, and we'll have, I'm sure, questions and discussion about this, that so employees have part of it and patients have the other, and where the entrance is situated on 19th, does it really need to be there? Is there another way that patients, that employees could perhaps access from George Mason as well? But again, it's a balance, because this is surrounded by single-family neighborhood on three sides. So, where one, if you push height one way, it could come the other, unless it's sort of diagonally more towards the interior of the site, and anytime we change where access points are, it throws more traffic or less traffic. So, I just say that as we begin to discuss this, this evening. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, the detail and the effort and the dedication of Commissioners Yakimini and Commissioner Lantelme. This, this has been really a very intensive, difficult, complicated SPRC, and I think I'm grateful to Commissioner Yakimini for having brought some, some clarity to it in her exposition. So, we'll move now to our discussion agenda. I want to very quickly list the groups of issues, and then we'll go back and take them one by one, and we'll see if Commissioners have any additional items to add. So, you have seen this, we will discuss a couple of issues dealing with the current site, the long-range planning aspect of our work tonight, the massing of the structures, the architecture of the proposed structures, the outpatient building, vehicular access points and garage entrances, parking, TDM and public transportation, pedestrian access and campus layout, open space, and we've also added some issues on behavioral health, which we did hear about on September 6th. So, let's just start with the two questions that are, are listed for current site, and I think this question came up at the end of the September 6th meeting. How many Virginia Hospital Center employees live in Arlington, and what is the wage breakdown for resident, resident employees? We could hear that response in terms of AMI ranges. The other question here is provide information on Virginia Hospital Center's smoking prohibition on campus. Does it extend to sidewalks next to the campus? Those, I guess, were two questions that were asked the other night. Under this topic, it's kind of a catch-all. Does anybody else have an additional? No. So, I, I think we're just looking for answers then.
I think staff is, staff and the applicant are probably prepared.
Okay, let's hear it. So, the question was, do you have additional information on how many hospital employees live in Arlington, and what is the wage breakdown for resident employees?
Yes, I'm Adrian Stanton, Vice President at Virginia Hospital Center.
Good evening.
We, it is somewhat tough to answer, because when you talk about employees, there are full-time employees, and then there are actual number of employees, and so full-time employees is taking part-time, et cetera. We have around 3,000 employees at Virginia Hospital Center. Of those, the largest geographic area where employees live is in Arlington. That represents anywhere from around 13% to 15% of the employees that work at the hospital, and that varies year in, year out. The tougher one on that question is the pay issue. So, when we looked at our employees and those that specifically live in Arlington, that's everybody that works at the hospital. There are physicians, there's nurses, there's techs, there's ancillary support staff that live in Arlington, and that runs the gamut of the salary scale. So, it is very difficult to say it is a single group, it is not a single group, it actually represents the broad base of the entire hospital staff.
I think that, that question, that was your question, Commissioner?
Actually, it was mine. Commissioner Swinney. I would, actually. So, in your presentation the other night, you did talk about you're adding 400 or more jobs, and I was just curious if the level of job would enable people to live in Arlington? That was really the thrust of my question.
And I think the answer is because those 400 would be primarily around the additional inpatient beds and inpatient services, to include emergency services, it would represent exactly what we just presented, which is it will be the broad scope of the entire staff, meaning nurses, technicians, and ancillary support staff.
So, you think it's evenly spread between physicians and?
I actually think it'll be more skewed towards not physician so much as it would be towards nurses, technicians, and ancillary support staff.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other follow-up on this line of questioning? If not, we wanted to ask you also about the, your smoking policy, your prohibition, which exists on campus itself, does it extend to sidewalks next to campus? That was a question that came up. And if not, how do you influence that sort of behavior?
So, it, it extends to the entire campus. We believe as the only hospital serving Arlington County and as a healthcare provider, we need to enforce strongly a no-smoking policy. So, for our staff, they are not allowed to smoke on the campus. If they choose to smoke and have to go someplace else to smoke, that requires them to clock out, meaning they just can't leave the site. So, we believe that is a strong incentive that keeps them from being able to leave the site to smoke. It is a policy we feel very strongly about, and we do not, doing anything to that policy, meaning creating a place for them to smoke, really is not a no-smoking policy.
Very good, thank you very much. Commissioner Hughes.
I, I'm the, the poor person who asked this question. I, I concur with your assessment and support the principles, having a grandmother who passed away from a smoking illness, and I'm an absolute non-smoker myself. That being said, human behavior is what I'm more concerned about. I do not wish for us to create any place for smoking on the campus, but I'm going to consider whether or not, at the time of motion-making, whether or not I recommend such an action as not prohibiting it on the public sidewalks right away on the campus. My concern remains, we may encourage, to the best of our ability, human behavior, but we must also acknowledge what happens when human behavior, and the only outcome I can see by prohibiting it entirely within your campus and making it as difficult as possible ends only with cigarette butts in all of your neighbors' yards. And so, therefore, I may very well make a motion, not because I don't concur completely with the assessment and the, the administration of the hospital, which I applaud you on your efforts to reduce smoking in your, your staff, it is simply a nature of understanding of human behavior, and that the prohibition on public sidewalks on the campus, I think, within Virginia principles and within general, should be something we should consider, if only to prevent the cigarette butts from ending up on our neighbors.
Commissioner Guerin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Forgive me for digressing for a moment. I think it's laudable that you have prohibited smoking, given you're a hospital and you probably have programs to help people who have an addiction to smoking. Please reassure us that all of your employees who do smoke can take advantage of those.
You're absolutely correct, and I failed to mention that. We do offer smoking cessation classes and programs to our employees, those are all free of charge and are offered year-round.
Commissioner Lantelme.
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Guerin's question. We keep talking, and the others, we keep talking about employees. A large, I understand, quite a number of the people on the campus are also contractors, or there are tenants in the condo building. They are, I'm not sure how they are treated in your policies and what we're talking about here, the various controls that you have. Certainly, you can directly control your own employees, but I know there has to be an arms-length relationship with a lot of your contractors, and certainly with the tenants in the condo building. How does it work for them, these policies? Do, are, is the smoking cessation, for example, open to anybody who is giving services to your, to that campus?
Yes, it is, and it's also free of charge to them as well, so they can take advantage of those. So they can take advantage of those programs. They do have to abide by the no-smoking policy of the campus, though.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes.
You want to follow up to our staff and the county staff? Will the sidewalks on the Edison Site property have a public right-of-way easement placed on top of them, or will it just simply be public sidewalks on private property? I've seen both in the county.
The question is, the sidewalks around, around the Virginia Hospital Center?
The perimeter of the site.
Will have sidewalk easements.
Sidewalk easements, okay.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions in this sort of grab-bag of questions dealing with hospital policy, hospital pay structure? If not, let's move on to the issue of long-range planning. Let me just run through, what is the county's relevant planning policy guidance for the project? Why didn't Virginia Hospital Center file a PDSP? What is the benefit of a PDSP prior to the next phase of development? Discuss the usefulness or not of having a long-range plan or PDSP for the entire VHC site, both in relationship to the present application and future changes to the site. The applicant's recently offered 20-year master plan has not been before the SPRC, and the community hasn't reviewed it. What do we expect planning-wise from a public facility, albeit privately owned in a residential area? Those are dense and important questions. So I'm just going to open it up. Ah, oh, I carry, yes, I think you want to answer why didn't you file a PDSP?
Is this on? Let me see. It is on? Okay. Okay. Let me talk a little bit about PDSP. So the SD zoning ordinance, if you look at 4.3.3D3, requires that hospitals prepare two, is it not on? Get a little closer.
Your name for the record.
Oh, my name for the record. My name is Nan Walsh, and I'm very pleased to be here on behalf of Virginia Hospital Center.
Good evening.
I was also here in 2000. So SD requires that the applicant prepare two five-year master plans. And this provision of requiring the master plans was adopted by the county in 1990. And I'm ashamed to admit that I may be the only person in the room that was actually there testifying and wrote letters on it. There was discussion at that time, actually, whether it was a better route to go master plan or phased development site plan, which is a PDSP. And the determination at that time was that a master plan was a little bit more flexible and fluid and probably better suited a hospital which changes so much over time. So there was actually discussion about one or the other, and it was determined by the county at that time that they thought a master plan was the best way to go. Pursuant to that requirement, we did file the two five-year plans, a 10-year plan. And we also, at staff's request, added to that and actually have a 25- to 50-year plan, which is in your package. On PDSPs, and I think the reason why it wasn't thought about is PDSPs are typically in Arlington for very, very large sites. And the provision of the ordinance actually says it's for sites over 20 acres, and it was that way for years. And then a little bit of flexibility was added in more recently to say, or less than 20 acres at the discretion of the county manager. Our site has never met the 20-year minimum until we added Edison Street. We just tipped over the 20 acres. We're at 21.6 acres. So you would typically see a PDSP for Potomac Yards, Rosam Plaza, 2.5 million square feet, Colonial Village, all of these very, very large sites. There has never been a hospital that has used the PDSP process. Having said all of that, we have agreed to Site Plan Condition 56, and that requires us to prepare a phased development site plan before our next major site plan application. So we have begun that process with the master plan that's in your package, and we will continue it prior to filing any major change to the campus in the future.
Any follow-up?
Madam Chair, I'm assuming that we'll have discussion on these same topics after we get through all of the questions?
Would you prefer to proceed that way? Okay. So we've had a response from the applicant why PDSP was not filed. Thank you, thank you for that. I guess I'll go back to the, to the first question. What is the county's relevant planning or policy guidance for the project? And I think we had?
Chair?
Yes, please.
I think what Commissioner Yakimini was asking was whether or not we would be coming back for commission discussion through these topics? If that was your intention, or whether you wanted discussion now on these topics?
I think we can, I would like to see this emerge. Our discussion should be formed organically as issues come forward. I don't, my own preference is not to place, sort of, place things in cubby holes.
Okay.
It's a huge, huge question. I would just say quickly, I felt a frustration during the SPRC concerning what might happen, would happen, on the adjoining site. Had the adjoining site, the current VHC site, been completely redeveloped, that would not have been an issue. But since, as has been pointed out, the buildings are quite old, the circulation is difficult, I felt a bit constrained because we couldn't talk about both sites together to solve some of the problems that we haven't really been able to address. So I think that's a, that's a very big issue. I think we will return to it as we go forward. So I will stick with the outline to the extent that it makes sense. Do you have a comment? Commissioner Schroll?
Yeah, I would, I would concur with the, with the chair that, I understand Ms. Walsh's points. That being said, the county manager did have the ability to make this a PDSP process if he thought it needed it. And I think our chair pointed out, we would have, I think, benefited from having a fulsome discussion of what the hospital intended to do longer, what its needs were, and set some appropriate boundaries so that everybody, the community, the hospital, could win. And PDSPs are amendable documents. They're not set in stone. It would allow the hospital to come back later if things changed, they needed to build a different building, perhaps. That's why we have that tool. And I wish we put it in place here tonight to say that we use the tools that we had in our toolbox to allow the hospital to expand, because we all know it's necessary, but to do it in a way that's respectful of the neighbors to the north of the property as it was done to the neighbors to the south, so.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schroll. Does anybody else? Commissioner Yakimini?
Thank you. I appreciate the applicant's discussion of the SD zoning. And I think as we've seen on Planning Commission, that a lot of our codes and a lot of our things that were written in the 1980s and the 1990s, as we begin to use them in the county, we begin to realize that some of the ideas and some of the notions that we had at one time really don't work or needed to be changed. And that we have, as Commissioner Schroll said, experienced a lot of PDSP amendments lately, that we seem to have regular dialogues with some of our developers who, whose property are in PDSPs. So we've been pretty adept at that. My concern with doing a PDSP after this one is that, I think, as all of us know, the edges of any site are really the most important parts of the site because they always transition to something. In our development corridors, they'll, they might transition to some open space or a public park, or they'll transition to another tall building. But in this case, it's transitioning to single-family neighborhoods. And the placing of massing right now at the edges really will preclude, in my opinion, a very fulsome discussion of a PDSP about massing and arrangement of walkways and green space. It really sort of cuts off a very vital part of what the discussion could be. So I appreciate the giving of the applicant for this, but it's sort of one step too late, in my opinion.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lantelme?
We did have five SPRCs, and I was at them. And I do recall these issues coming up at, not all of them, at least four of them, that we were asking, what is going to be happening with this site? What will be happening going forward? And we were talking about the entire hospital site, not just the Edison site. It was, the information came out in dribs and drabs over that time. We never were able to have a full discussion on it. It was five years, 10 years, this building, that building, never a full, here's what our vision is over time for everything here. That didn't come until after the last SPRC. The community did not have any opportunity to be able to talk that through, to react to it, and neither did, did those of us in the commission who were at the SPRCs. I think this is a site that did call out for a formal PDSP. It is over 20 acres. It is, the whole intent of it was to be a unified site. And it should be. And you're right about that. It should be. And thus, PDSP was the way to go from the very beginning.
Anyone else? Commissioner Morton?
I concur with my fellow commissioners about the PDSP. But even going back to the SD designation which you're talking about, I understand the difference between the guidelines being less prescriptive and some of the other more prescriptive tools that we've got. But I'm just still wondering, given that it doesn't conform even with that, what is it about this project that makes you think those aren't important guidelines?
That's a question for staff.
The staff presentation was saying, well, this is really not so prescriptive. So what is it about this project that makes you think that those aren't important?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Morton. And as I did say in my presentation last week, and by the way, my name is Matt Ladd with the County Planning Division, representing staff tonight. The distinction that I made in the, in the presentation was between the guidelines that were, as you said, less, less prescriptive and regulations that may need to be modified or waived or met. And it's perhaps an awkward way of putting sector plan-level guidance within the zoning ordinance. But that's, that's where we are. And I guess to your, your question is, what in staff's view allows some, some of the things, you know, for example, I mentioned last week the, that there's not a height taper along George Mason Drive as an example, where it doesn't follow exactly the letter of that, of that guideline. And I think staff took a holistic view of the application and all of those guidelines, and as the zoning ordinance says, took them into consideration, also took into consideration the other factors that I addressed in my presentation last week and all of the, all of the infrastructure benefits that are coming from this project and all of those other things.
Follow-up, or are we, are we good? Anyone else? Commissioner Weir?
This bleeds a little bit into transportation, and I don't mean it to. I mean it to be a comment about the importance of a PDSP for this site. And, you know, I'm struck by the fact that the hospital, the current area, the current site is surrounded by local principal and arterial streets, but beyond that, it is entirely surrounded by local minor streets. The transportation infrastructure in this area is a transportation infrastructure designed to get cars to and from, and I do mean cars, to and from their single dwelling houses. In the middle of all of that is a facility that, that the applicant seeks to become the most hospital we can get, which is what we need, but using just a garage. And it strikes me that sort of planning for how people are going to get to, building a very large facility about, for a specific type of mode, transportation mode, without a sense, without a holistic plan for what facilities and construction will be requiring that mode, is not entirely dissimilar from building a major highway in the middle of Greenfield and then being shocked, shocked, I tell you, when the only thing that's developed around it is single-family housing. And I'm being deliberately hyperbolic because I, but I do want to express that it's not, I think that the comments that my fellow commissioners have made about the importance of a PDSP relate not just to the building and massing aspects of the site, but the fact that the, the transportation modalities and the transportation facilities that are contemplated and built on the site respectively, themselves need to comport with a master plan for what the entire site is going to need. And I think that in that transportation aspect too, and I heard this mentioned by the chair of the Transportation Commission and by the liaison to the Transportation Commission, that there are transportation reasons for wanting a PDSP as well.
Right. Thank you. I think if there is no other follow-up on this line, I did want to, Mr. Ladd?
Yes, Madam Chair, just, I wanted to clarify something that I heard up on the dais, which was that the staff in the county can't compel the applicant to submit a PDSP. And so, you know, it might have been advantageous for all of the reasons that are being discussed to have one, and staff agrees with that. And that's why we're putting a condition into this site plan to do it for next time. And if the question is why not this time, it's because we can't require them to do that. And the only mechanism we have to require them to do it is a site plan condition with this site plan to do it for the next phase.
Commissioner Yakimini?
Commissioner Schroll, did you want to jump in first?
We might be saying the same thing here. Mr. Ladd, I appreciate that explanation. I think the reason that this is different is this is the county's land. Edison Site is the county's property. It's going to be sold, or transferred, I should say, to the hospital. And so, in this instance, the county has different leverage than it would have in other, in other projects. Is that not taken into consideration by staff?
It was not written into the option agreement, and it was not part of the letter of intent that, for the, for that real estate transaction. So therefore, the county gave up its leverage.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. I think that's something we all know. I just want to make sure we had that on the record.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. And I think that's something that is also something that we should all kind of point out to each other, which is collectively set up a process here that, that didn't get us where we needed to go.
Commissioner Yakimini?
Following up on my colleague's comments, it is true. Matt and I had many discussions, and even with the applicant, about the efficacy of a PDSP. But what was called out in the MOU that is governing this is an SPRC process. And in some times, I wonder why that was. And I think that maybe, who knows? I don't know what was in the board, in the minds of the board members at the time, that they're so used to SPRC process really have, being a place where interests come together, those of the community, those of boards and commissions, those of the applicant, and have a fulsome discussion. And they didn't think that what sets that up is usually a larger planning document. Because we are so used to the SPRCs always being about planned areas that have those. So it was, it was sort of the missing ingredient in the soup. And, you know, we've all said it over and over again, but I also know that, and Commissioner Schroll is head of PFRC, that now for our facilities that are privately owned, we have very robust planning processes. And we have Commissioner McSweeney, who's just come off of the Career Center. Center, as well as some of our other members on that. And I think we can all testify for the fact that when it comes to a facility, which happens to be county-owned, we are doing a lot of preliminary work about placing, finding out what expectations are of that place and the rest of it. And even on what is still county-owned land because of the MOU, we didn't get a chance to do that for a privately-owned facility. And it's just feeling, it's another reason it feels weird. And it feels weird with our adopted plans' principles and how we have been proceeding as a county.
How we have been proceeding recently. I just also just want to underscore what Commissioner Schroll said, and what Commissioner Yakimini also said, and what I felt throughout the process, was that we kept going down a kind of a blind alley, that we were working behind a screen, getting a glimpse now and then in answer to questions about open space. We heard about temporary open space in the Sunken Garden, temporary. So how temporary? What about the unified site? Would there be open space not, you know, 100 feet away? We could not get answers to that. And so, it was, made it very difficult to evaluate and come to a conclusion about the SPRC that was called for in the documents. I wanted to just switch a little bit to the master plan, which we did not, I'm not clear as to what the status of that is. There was a submission from the applicant in late August, I believe, showing phasing, eight phases. I look at that, and I begin to think I have answers to questions that came up during the SPRC, but I'm confused about the status of that. And I guess I would also add, since that a master plan was called for in the zoning, why did it take so long to see it?
If I could address that question, and I believe Ms. Walsh addressed this earlier, the SD zoning requires a five-year master plan, and then another for the next five years, a conceptual master plan. And that's perhaps a limitation of the SD zoning. When we look at the history of how the hospital develops, it develops over decades and not in five-year increments. But the applicant did, with its initial 4.1 filing, show what they referred to as the empty chair building, the building that would be on the Edison site adjacent to the proposed outpatient building. So it met that requirement for the purposes of the hospital saying, in the next 10 years, this is where we plan to develop. Now, through the SPRC process, there were additional discussions about, could there be an internal ring road around the site, what happens to the central utility plant? And the applicant provided those through the SPRC process. At the conclusion of the SPRC process, as staff was continuing to have discussions with the applicant about the outstanding issues through the SPRC process, one of them was going further beyond that 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years. So the result of that was, with the required 4.1 submission prior to planning commission, we received the eight-phase master plan that you have.
And that is, how many years out is that supposed to cover? Or perhaps Ms. Walsh can respond to my general question?
I would say it's a 50-year master plan.
That's 50 years, those phases.
So you correctly, Madam Chairman, noted that we have an eight-step master plan process. What you saw at the initial steps, as Mr. Ladd said, there really isn't much happening in the next 10 years after these buildings. That's why there wasn't much to show. So the first phase was our 1625 building, which we built in 2004. The second is the outpatient pavilion and garage that we're proposing today. The third phase of that, linked to it, is the work we're doing in the existing 1625, to expand the emergency department, to increase the behavioral beds and the other beds in the building. And then the last part of this first 10-year is actually removal of the green garage and putting in a new central utility plant. That pretty much covers the 10-year period, and that's what you saw. And then staff requested us to go beyond that, and that is where you begin the process of evaluating the pad site, and then taking down those older buildings in the middle.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up? Commissioner Yakimini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I thank Ms. Walsh for her elucidation on the particular aspects of the master plan. But what I would say to my colleagues is what I had said before, it is their master plan. It is what they have on their to-do list. It is not something that has been discussed with the community, discussed with staff and other commissions. So that we could help the hospital as we see their aspirations of, this building's getting old, what are we going to do with it? We need to have these services. There's things, new things we'd like to add. I think all of us would like to be involved in the conversation of, of how is that arranged on the site? And that's what the PDSPs get us to. It's really good that we have a notion from the hospital of their aging infrastructure and what can happen. And it's sort of a signal to say, hey, be on the lookout for this. But we'll find ourselves in the same place again, where the hospital has negotiated with itself about what it needs exactly as buildings to satisfy its functions, rather than saying, I'm going to have a 60-year-old building, I have X, Y, and Z in it, I need to move that around, and we need, how should we do this? Not so much necessarily how, but to the neighborhood of, you know, perhaps they say, well, we could tear down the green garage, and we could erect this, or we'll tear down the women and children's, and we'll put up something else. And how can we arrange that? And does someone have other ideas? And how does that work with the whole process? And I think that's where all of us collectively really do, you know, bring some value to all of this. Because we also keep in mind, what about the access points? What about the transportation infrastructure? What about the whole thing?
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I just want to say, from a layperson's point of view, I'm not employed to do a certain set of tasks for a hospital or a developer. I'm not employed by the county to work every single day on refining my knowledge of zoning. I'm called upon as a citizen, living in Arlington for 30 years, and having two children, using the schools, that sort of thing. The commission is made up of carrying people of various descriptions, laypeople. And I think it's, I want to point out that it was really confusing to me. And I'm, thank you for the clarification about the eight phases that we saw at the very end of the process. Because a picture is worth 1,000 words. And I began to try and answer some of the questions that I felt couldn't be answered during the SPRC process, without really understanding the timeline. And that the disparate pieces of information we got, for example, the condo offices with their claim on parking on the hospital site, why can't that be changed? Why can't that be utilized? Taking down the green garage? Why can't the bulk, or the some bulk of parking be placed there? I think that, I do sympathize and I understand now, with your explanation about what we saw with those eight phases and the master plan, how difficult it is. However, I still come back to my feeling expressed by Commissioner Lynn Tellme, that my instinct was to see this as a unified site. And I do, am persuaded by Commissioner Yakimini's characterization of a PDSP, which brings the community in for review, which is what Arlington does. So I don't want to belabor the point now. I think we should move on, unless no other questions, to the massing of the structures. That was one of the biggest concerns, including what felt like a super block being almost a wall against the neighborhood. That was the feeling that I had, looking at the massing and design, with a large building contiguous with that design of the garage. So I would invite questions, follow-up from my fellow commissioners on that particular subject, if you would like me to re, you have the questions in front of you. We talked about setbacks the other night. And I think Ms. Walsh gave the numbers from curb to the first, to the setback, to the step up, to the, that's one of our questions. Should we go over that, do you think, Commissioner Yakimini?
Why don't we let the architect show us some pictures? Do we have some of the exhibits, I think we do in our packets, that we can speak to, so that we can see the setbacks? And I'm hopeful some of the drawings of context.
Chairman Siegel, can I give a little introduction before?
Yes, certainly. Absolutely.
I think it's really important, because I've heard more than once that the project doesn't comply and comport with the guidelines, in terms of the SD ordinance and the setbacks. And the, I would challenge that, and say that we actually do comply. And the goals of the guidelines, and again, this was in 1990, and as Mr. Ladd tells me, things change over time, was that these guidelines were directed at the neighborhood streets, which were 16th, Edison, and 19th, and not as much toward George Mason Drive, which is a major arterial with four lanes, a median, and 70,000 trips a day. And as to the orientation of these structures toward the neighborhood streets, I would submit to the commission that we fully comply with the setback requirements. The setback requirements, and we've got to look at the guidelines of SD, we can't just say the words, we actually have to look at them, requires that initially the structures have a setback that's equivalent to the setback of the surrounding zoning, which is R. That's a 25-foot setback. In every regard, on 19th and Edison, we exceed 25 feet. The next part of the structure has to be of a height substantially equivalent to the surrounding zoning. The surrounding zoning permits 35 feet to the center of the slope of the roof, so most of the houses are between 40 and 42 feet. The podiums surrounding the outpatient pavilion along 19th, the garage along 19th, and extending along Edison Street, all comport with that height requirement. And then, as to the garage, the setbacks just continue with tiering at three levels along Edison Street, two levels along 19th Street. So with that, we can go through the exhibits, but I did want to make sure that I really articulated exactly what the guidelines say, and how we have addressed that. We've taken them very, very seriously.
Commissioner Yakimini?
I very much appreciate the applicant's explication of the math. And I think what we end up with, and what we saw through SPRC and heard from the neighborhoods and other commissions, is that, you know, math is one thing, and what it actually yields is another. And the experience that the neighborhoods had, and in fact, planning commission and commissions at the time in 2000, whenever the south end of the campus was being developed, was that those didn't quite fit. And so, I would, looking at the main hospital building, it actually is more setback than what would be required in SD. The zoning code is a very blunt instrument for design. And I think we see that over and over again. And that's why there's so many people that go to BZA, and that's why there's use permits that have been put in place for the placement of buildings in our zones, because it's a blunt instrument. And when it is applied purely mathematically, it doesn't necessarily yield the design that is the most sympathetic.
Anyone else on this subject of massing? Yes, Commissioner, sorry?
I asked the applicant, we have this picture here.
Oh.
You, Commissioner Hughes?
That is me, Commissioner Schroll.
I'm sorry for blowing you out. Asking you something.
I guess, Commissioner Yakimini, or, we have the applicant, does the applicant have any of the setbacks, step backs for the massing in a better diagram format that we could show tonight? Just real quickly. I do want to just speak briefly on this, because it's going to talk later to a motion that I intend to make. And I also think for my fellow commissioners, it's exceptionally relevant, not only today, but in the future, as we go about planning. This site has the unique challenge, of course, of being outside of a sector plan, outside of a form-based code, outside of a defined PDSP. As those of you who remember my red cross time, it's challenging. And, you know, we had a change right there at the last minute before it went to the county board, that certainly improved that building and made it more amenable to the neighbors. And so, I went to think about myself on this site. So this is great. We can see here, is this from the center line? Or is this from curb? Great. This is probably the best one to leave up there for. I think that it's important, I brought, if each of you at the table, I appreciate staff putting this out for me. This is the Wellington site. And we approved this site under the form-based code a while ago, about 24, within the past 24 months, two years. You'll notice on the left-hand side, it says "existing single-family home." The reason I appreciate this site a lot in context is, the Wellington site here is buried at the back of this entire property. On one side of it is the Army-Navy Country Club, and the other side of it is the Arlington View Neighborhood, which has had similar challenges from our county as Halls Hill, which is abutting this site. My point on bringing this to the commission's attention is, I think Commissioner Yakimini said it best, zoning is a blunt instrument, and the codes and the setbacks are very blunt, and they don't necessarily end with a good design. And I concur with that assessment. And we should be respectful of the fact, though, that as I think the applicant was quite clear about, this proposal may very well be in conformance with the SD zone. One thing that's different, and I think that's different, that's important to remember, this, I think, is even probably, in the case, worse for the neighbors here. It's closer, it's higher. And as you can see, while the applicant here did not go to the allowed building height, they had a great deal more height they could have gone for. However, what's missing is that, as it presents to the neighbors, there is not a giant parking garage in their back door. That is a big deal. I think that as we approach our neighbors, we need to think carefully about it. So I just want to bring this to the attention of my fellow commissioners, because as we think about what motions we like to make, how we like to talk about setbacks and massings and addressing it, I remind you that in other parts of our county, that are similarly situated with existing single-family homes and transitional areas, that transition from a density level to a single-family home, that we must acknowledge those challenge, because it's going to happen more frequently as we move forward in our planning, that some have come forward. Shallow sites will be even harder, and to make things economically viable, it's difficult. And we have found a success story here at the Wellington, and I use the Wellington for a specific reason. I remember the ladies who lived in this house, who were right here at my use permit, and they were very comfortable having known that the process that led to the establishment of these setbacks and step backs was a community process that was led by the community and took time. And on top of all of that, they were also pleased that the community assets that were going to be delivered with this building, i.e. the affordable housing contribution mandate under the form-based code, would be a benefit to their community that they felt was necessary. So that made them tolerant of So that made them tolerant of both the step backs, the setbacks, and the height that was about to be on their back door with absolutely no street in between them, except for an alley, and very little things. So as we approach our thoughts and motions and comments where I suspect that we will all be making this evening, I wanted to make sure we had this in our context and our memory. And that's about all I'm going to say on that subject.
Commissioner Weir.
So I want to follow up just a little bit on the comments, and I'm looking at Section 433D-1B. This is the section of the ZO that Ms. Walsh was referring to. And it strikes me that that section begins not with the mathematical formula that Ms. Walsh was presenting to us, but instead it begins with "The bulk and placement of the building shall be concentrated in location on the site so as to have the least negative impact on the surrounding neighborhoods." And I think the discomfort that we at the table have felt and that we heard at the SPRC meetings was whether or not that's what's been presented. And, you know, to then go back to the text, it continues that "The basis for judging whether the appropriate bulk and placement of density on the site shall be the degree to which the project achieves a tapering in height, bulk and mass from the center of the site, or from that portion deemed appropriate for the concentration of density on the master plan." And I am just not convinced that what we are seeing in the applicant's proposal is what we would expect to see if we had begun with a PDSP that questioned where on this whole site is it appropriate to have density, where on this whole site is it appropriate to have parking, et cetera? And right now, what we have is just a concentration of density right up against the single families. So yes, I appreciate the applicant pointing out to us the math in the later part of that section, but when we look at the whole of the hospital site, what we're seeing is the density and the bulk pushed to the edge of the site. And that's, I guess, where I'm stuck.
I would just—I support your comments. I think that you have articulated something that has stayed with us as we read through the zoning. As one factor, the mathematical formula having been met or not, and the other aspects that come into play, we'll discuss later on, which is the open space. Where is it? Is the building—there are two buildings, and they're kind of pushed together, and then there is a garden space, temporary. So it looked like there could be room to play with that. But again, that conversation was cut short because we couldn't talk about the other part of—
Madam Chair, I'm just going to have to say, we're probably getting into call and response with the applicant, and I think we need to stop it, because I'm playing in it too, so.
All right. Let's—are there any more comments about setbacks or massing in general? The fact that the buildings are quite close together and create a sort of a wall against the neighborhood. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. My final comment, and it's just going to be a comment to my fellow commissioners, is I think about the connections of north-south between the Raarby Corridor and the Columbia Pike Corridor, Washington Boulevard, of course, furthest to the east, then Glebe, followed them by George Mason, and the fact that, of course, they were all planned at various different times of our planning process across the county and how the zoning changed. But how key these north-south parts of our gridded street network are, and especially those that connect to our east-west thoroughfares. And as we consider whether or not more east-west thoroughfares are to be added to our county development plans and long-range goals, we also need to be mindful of the north-south connectors between them.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Commissioner Yakimini?
I thought we were going to turn to the applicant and look at some of the pictures. I always feel badly that at Planning Commission, we don't—
Do that.
—see that.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jim Henry with HDR.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I think at the last meeting we had last week, there was like two sections that you were asking specifically about, to sort of understand the hard-line section from what were the setbacks and what were the heights. And so we took the sections that we had, we pocheted it, and added the dark line to help make it a little more clear that at—this is the setbacks on 19th Street. We've got 19—39-foot height. It steps back 60 feet. It goes up 56 feet to the height of the building of 95. There was a question about the height of the additional height for the penthouse, which is 118 feet total. So non-occupied space, enclosed penthouse at the top.
Thank you very much.
The section, then, along North Edison Street. This is the garage, as described previously. The multiple setbacks, we have multiple levels below grade. Then we go up 31 feet, setback additional 44, almost 45 feet, up to 55 feet. And then there's one single tray that's above—that's the sixth level, or I said earlier last week, the five-and-a-half levels, which would be the 67 feet. So that—towards the middle of the site is the highest point of the garage.
Of the garage. Okay? Anything else? If not, I want to move on to the architecture of the proposed structures, in particular the garage. Anybody like to raise a point, make a comment, ask a question? It's a very good question here. Does the character or the design of the garage reflect, to the greatest degree possible, the residential context of the site? I think that's been a major problem. Would anybody like to?
Madam Chair, could I ask the architects if they wanted to show us the garage with—in plan? I should say the renderings. I always get—
You're asking about the pathways, or you're talking about the—just the character of the garage?
No, just the character of it. I think—
Yeah, let's find an elevation of that.
Do you have slides of all of the things in your packet, like A210?
They're looking it up. So I think one of the things that—yeah, we'll find it here in a second. That's 19th.
Oh, there's the operating room again.
Okay. So this is the North Edison Street view. What you're seeing here is the levels of the 31-foot high that we talked about previously on the previous section along North Edison Street. One of the things that we did early in the SPRC process, because we had different facades multiple times as we went through the review process, and one of the things that we heard loud and clear was to try to make it more amenable or compatible in the neighborhood setting. And so some of the things that we did is we looked at some of the architectural character that is currently on the site. That had to do with some of the material palette, the use of awnings and horizontal lines, as well as caps or the tops of the buildings, and how that sort of held the eye lower versus, you know, tracing up to the sky. The other thing that we did is we went through and we divided the—we looked at the houses across the street, and we looked at the patterning of the lot lines and the houses and what that patterning was as far as having a ver—yeah, here's some ideas. So how it varied along that facade. And so we broke up the facade and changed the materials so that you didn't have one material stretching the length of the garage, but varied in trying to mimic what was happening across the street. So that's—I don't know if you can go back to that previous view. That was the approach that we were taking as far as the breakup of the push and pull of what you see there is some stone panels on the left-hand side of your screen, a series of vertical elements with a horizontal—hard horizontal line that—with a shadow line that sort of helped bring the scale down and create an awning look that was similar to the buildings that were there on the previous site. And then you pick up that other break in the facade as you move towards the intersection of 19th and Edison.
Would it be possible to show from the—just for our viewing audience, this kind of tome with all these pages is what we get that has all kinds of both the elevations and floor plans and site stuff and everything in it? Do you have in slide A210?
Yeah, let me see. Can I approach?
Yes, Learned Council may approach.
I don't know, man. It's tough up here. Yeah, so I show them what—
I thought he had them memorized. And I'm even short. That's what's great.
Okay, so here's a view of—do you have any way to zoom in on that a little bit? So this is the view that's in your packet. So that's the view of the—was the view of the ambulatory building. That's okay. So this is the 19th Street section. So if you were to take a section all the way through the site and you were looking at a flat elevation, this is what you'd see. So the foreground, a lot of the building is covered with the dense vegetation that we're having, but you can see that the attempt to break up the facade specifically in this view on the ambulatory building with the difference between the brick with the windows punched, then we pulled out the facade and made it a little bit taller with the stone elements there in the gray. And so you start to see that variation along the side that would start to mimic the building heights that are on the opposite side of the street. So there was an effort through the design to sort of try to create a dialogue, at least through rhythm and texture, what was happening on the other side of the street. So if you can scroll up to see the long facade of transverse, yeah. So the lower area, as you can see that the site—the road and the street of North Edison actually slopes from the high point at 19th towards the hospital. So there's a line at the top of the building, and I wish I had—it shows—there's a demarcating line that is the top of the lowest level of the garage that's closest to the street. And so you can see the same variation that we tried to create on the ambulatory building, brought that over to treat the garage in a similar way, to treat it more like building and less like garage, with that same finessration pattern, with the same breakup of the facade, and trying to figure out—or trying to show that same rhythm of breaking the facade up as it moved from north to south. There's other line that we put in there, if you can point to the awning right across there. It's an awning that's an additional element that we created to create shadow lines that have then also brought your eye down and created more of a pedestrian feel along that facade. So these are all elements and things that we tried to do to make it to be a good neighbor across the street.
Commissioner Kiran, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. About how far away would you say we, as the viewer, are now looking at this? Because one of the concerns we heard throughout SPRC was, what does this look like from the homes that are directly across the street? When they're standing in their front yard, they don't have this perspective with the stepped-back areas truly receding. It's much closer than that. Can you either zoom in, or do you have a rendering like that?
While we look for a rendering, I think it'll be far less perceived. Because of the height of the trees, the height that we've created, and the variation, what they're going to see is not too dissimilar to—I mean, their view will be very—will be captured to a small amount of viewing range. You're not going to be able to—you know, our 30-degree angle that our eyes see is not to the spectrum of what you're seeing in these renderings. And so you'll have a much more captured and focused view of what's across the street with the additional setbacks and the landscaping that's in front and the materials that we're having. The layering of all of that will not, in my opinion, feel like that you're looking at the whole building as a whole, you'll be capturing it in moments.
Commissioner Yakimini.
Thank you for that. I think the applicant, over time, has tried to use the elements that we find in the neighborhood, but as sort of the—not this slide so much as the other ones that we were looking at, A200, I think really brings home, though, the complete massiveness and solidness of it, whereas the single-family houses, there's space between them, there's a different texture. Granted, one would expect, you know, a building and a garage has to have that, but there is very little change in the surface. And again, there's no breaks in it except for a garage entrance. And so it presents this complete wall. And I sort of hate to use that term because it's a little bit fraught, but it is seemingly impenetrable, I guess is the way that I wanted to say it. And I think that's what SPRC reacted to.
I just want to follow up Commissioner Yakimini's comment. When we did the Mazda site, I know we worked very hard—and we do other sites as well—to make sure that there are stoops. Granted, this is a hospital, but, for example, had this area been lined with townhomes, accessory medical office use—I think that may have come up once during the SPRC—then you would have had penetration. This is a wall. No one is coming and going. The street isn't really activated, even to a residential level. And I think that's what, in addition to the massing, despite the architectural efforts to vary the colors and the create a residential resonance with the height of the first level, it still feels like a brick wall behind which one doesn't know what's happening, except a lot of cars are sitting. And I don't think that the brilliant architecture can undermine or soften, mitigate that feeling. Commissioner Morton.
I'd like to go back to that issue of what it looks like from across Edison Street, which I don't think this is really showing. Do you have another image that more accurately would show?
Yeah, I believe so. Let's see the—
Okay. Also, just reiterating, I think this will come up in a further bullet point, but this idea of the massing being not only the setback but breaking up the buildings, we had talked about what's the nature of the break between the two buildings and that passageway that you're talking about. And I'm wondering, too—this relates to the architecture with the vegetation screening it. Kind of seems like you're doing a lot to try to prevent people from looking at it in a way which sort of makes you think, maybe it shouldn't look like that. But what's the seasonal aspect of the vegetation?
Twinnie Rodriguez with Parker Rodriguez with the Landscape Architects. So we have spent a lot of time sort of in the selection of plant material. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the palette, the use of natives versus non, which I'll go into that a little later, because I'm sure that'll come back up. In terms of the seasonality of the plant material, I think if you'll see on that palette, there is, you know, the whole gamut of plants. The idea is to provide quite a bit of interest on all edges. So on the rear or the front, depending on where you are on Edison, we have a layering of landscaping that includes evergreen trees, ornamentals, shrubs of, you know, various textures and seasonality to— various textures and, and seasonality to, to their interest. Along 19th Street is a very similar treatment. And then along George Mason, there's a series of gardens that actually highlight quite a bit. The use of all of that layering from trees to ornamental trees to shrubs, evergreens, perennials, and ground covers.
Okay, thank you. And in the wintertime, what's the extent of the foliage?
Right, so there is a, a large use of evergreens as well, especially as a buffering technique. So we spent a lot of time developing that, you know, softening, especially along Edison and 19th. And that again is sort of that layering. I mean, the building did move back quite a bit to allow for a much more, you know, bolder buffering space. So it would allow us to do that layering. Initially, when the project had started, it had been more of a linear approach, a lot thinner. So as the building set back, we were able to layer all of those components.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner McSweeney.
Along these lines, the fact that this facade does not really activate the street at all, and because there are so many layers of, of shrubbery and trees, I, I wonder a little bit about the safety aspect, which I think has come up before. So what are the, what are the steps you've taken to sort of mitigate any, any safety concerns? Is there a lot of lighting on this, on this side, along the wall? As, you know, the fact that people are not coming and going and there's no permeability into or, or vision or view into the interior space? What are the thoughts on that?
And you, you may want to elaborate on this, but we were asked when we did the 1625 building to essentially create two levels of landscape buffer. One was actually a physical wall. It's kind of the opposite of what we're talking about today. There's a six-foot wall. We were asked by the neighbors on Edison and 16th to actually create a wall and then a major birmingham area. And I'm sure all of yous have experienced that as you've walked around the site. We have never, to my knowledge, had any security issues with the birmingham or anything occurring within those areas or any kind of crimes or anything like that. And the hospital, of course, has a lot of security that is on the campus at all times, and it's actually 24/7 because the operations are 24/7. So I think you probably have more security and watching eyes on this campus than you would a normal office building.
So it's, it's really just the feeling, I think I'm asking about too. I'm, I'm not necessarily saying I think there's going to be an increase in crime necessarily, but it's just the feeling, you know, will people be comfortable actually walking along this very extensive wall?
Anyone else? If not, I'd like to move on to the outpatient building. I think the first question was Commissioner Yakimini's question last time, September 6th. What is the height to the penthouse?
I think we had that slide. Do you want to put it back up, please?
Yeah, it was 23 feet additional height, so a total of 118 feet.
All right. That was a data point that we asked for last time. But I think the, the larger issue is why was the outpatient building not placed further south in the context of the final phase of the master plan, which we recently saw?
Can you put up the site plan so that the planning commission actually has a visual of what the layout is? Sliding the outpatient pavilion to the south has been a problem for the hospital since the beginning of this process. And the reason is that this is it for us. This is the last hope of us ever having any opportunity to expand. Every single inch of this land that we're acquiring is absolutely critical and cannot be wasted in any way. And we have very distinct separation now, which is going to be great for circulation and circling the campus and all that in terms of on the south end having our inpatient and on the north end having our outpatient services. And as I mentioned in my case in chief last week, the center of the site has these 10 very, very old buildings that we're going to need to take down, but we can't take them down until we replace the facilities so that we can move them in. The, if we slide the outpatient pavilion along George Mason, so it's not really the center of the site, it's still on the edge of the site, but we're just moving it south, we end up with a pad site, which is essentially an out parcel located on the corner of 19th and George Mason Drive. And that is a loss of very valuable space for us. We have to provide the drop off and pickup in that area as we are doing now on the other side. And that means the drop off and pickup is going to be adjacent to the corner of 19th and George Mason. And we have always been told to try to keep as much activity off 19th and Edison Street as possible, so that would be a problem. It would also be too close to the intersection to have a light that close to that intersection. And so site access would be a problem. And we also felt that having the open space, not on a corner, but in a little bit more tranquil location, to have the entry features and the gardens at that location was best. And we also are facilitating pedestrian access east-west, and that would be inhibited if we move it over. The most important thing though is our ability to use that future pad site to be able to replace the functions that occur in the center of the site. The functions that are in the center of the site are the medical offices, lab, warehouse, central sterile processing, nursing education, conference center, auditorium, oncology services, and our central plant. Those all serve both the inpatient and the outpatient and therefore need to remain in a centralized location. The other point I want to make sure is very, very clear to the planning commission is that, and if you, Michael, could point, the green garage and the 1715 building cannot come down. They cannot come down today and they will not be able to come down in 10 years. The condominium is not owned by Virginia Hospital Center. The garage is spoken for, both the 1635 condos and the 1715 have a right to that green garage. So when we're talking about looking at this site holistically, there is a line there that cannot be changed. So what we have tried to do is to the best of our ability through this tapering, center the density toward the center of the Edison Street site because we have a barrier there which will, which is part of the reason why a phased development site plan at this stage probably wouldn't do, be very helpful because that barrier is there for at least the next 10 years.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I'm confused. And maybe Mr. Ladd can help my memory. I thought that there was an iteration of a five to 10-year plan that showed us taking down the green garage. Is that true, Mr. Ladd?
I, I don't think assigning time phases to this is necessarily helpful, but I, I would ask the applicant to, to address the question about the, the green garage.
I, I believe Ms. Walsh, we saw, or at least in a meeting, that the applicant showed us that they wanted to take down the green garage and reorganize the loading area and the power plant.
That's correct, and that's 10 years out.
Right, but you just said those two buildings are immutable and are never coming down.
No, I said for next 10 years.
I thought I heard never. I thought I heard that that's what makes a line in the site.
It makes a line in the site today.
But it's a line that apparently can change to become the power plant.
In 10 years.
In 10 years.
We have to fully control the 1715 building, which we do not.
I'm aware of that.
Have to control the 1635 building, which we do not, in order to be able to take that garage down, which they have a right, the condominiums to park.
Right, but you've already decided that that will come down to be the new power plant rather than thinking that the power plant could be placed somewhere else and reconstructed.
It needs to be in a centralized location, obviously.
And I understand, and I, I thank you for that answer. What I found very interesting with what was being said about the placement of the outpatient, which is now 100 and some feet up to the, up to the top of the penthouse, which is a rather large penthouse, is it is because we would be foregoing the corner site. We would not be able to use that. I think that's what I heard. We were, it would either have to be access or maybe green space. The green space we felt was better in the interior. That is the perfect argument for a PDSP because the PDSP would lay out where massing and buildings could occur, and it could actually embrace the corner. While there may not be a building there anticipated in the first part of the PDSP where, you know, the structure and, and the bulk of the outpatient building could be relocated, it could be said in the PDSP that this would be a building site. It wouldn't be green space forever. So I, I, in, in some ways, I'm sort of hearing why some of the, the trepidation of the hospital actually could have been addressed through the longer planning, longer range planning.
I just point out that the PDSP at Pentagon City was initiated in 1976. PDSPs have a very, very long life, and as Commissioner Yakimini pointed out, they get amended. And I think the community would have had a better understanding of the constraints of the hospital and also a timeline within which to understand how better to articulate what mitigations they need in order to feel that the hospital fits comfortably into the residential neighborhood. Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Walsh walking through her explanation. I think one thing that was sort of notably left out is the fact that you do box yourself in, in terms of where you can put buildings on the Edison site, you have an over 60-foot parking structure that's above grade. And so the decision to do that, and you've, the applicant has told us why they want to do that, but by not putting it below grade across more of the site, you've limited where you can put above-grade. So that was a decision the applicant made. It's not a decision I think many of us at the DIES appreciate, but I, you know, it, it wasn't that you only had these options, there were others that the applicant did not avail themselves of.
Commissioner Hughes.
Thank, thank you. Commissioner Schroll, I think your comment reminds me of the empty pad site with the parking garage underneath it at Crystal City at 23rd and Crystal Drive that we recently approved, in which the office building approved in the early 80s was later converted by us to a residential building that's currently approved for construction. So in that case, the empty pad sat waiting for the building for 30 or 40 years basically with the foundation set. And while it was originally to be office, it was then changed later by our commission to housing. So I think it further amplifies, as you said, the opportunities that could be set forth in long-range planning and even allow the flexibility for changes in plans in the future.
Are there any other comments or questions concerning the outpatient building, its placement, relationship to the garage and the green garage and other structures on the other side?
Madam Chair, I, I, I do have a, a question and for the applicant that, actually, I guess we'll get to access, we'll get to access points and the pedestrian cut through later. So I, I'll hold my.
Very good. And Commissioner Weir.
Since I specifically asked the question about the patient of the outpatient center, I, I want to thank the applicant and Ms. Walsh for a very, I think, helpful explanation. But I, I want to associate myself with the comments about how a PDSP would have benefited this, even going so far as to saying that that is the kind of process that I think would have helped the community balance not just the square footage that is going to be required in that parcel and, and not just help the community understand why that facility has to be where it is in the corner. And, you know, all of a sudden, there's a light bulb that goes off. Oh, it doesn't necessarily make sense to have your green space on the outside corner of a hospital site for a lot of reasons. You want your green space to be where people might be walking from one building to the other. But at the same time, the community is then would have been able to have a conversation about, well, you know, we really would like to see perhaps this much or even more square footage dedicated to these purposes. We might be willing to support the applicant if they wanted to ask for an exemption to allow for activating the street and auxiliary medical offices like, like the chair suggested or, or even, you know, why can't you just build where the temporary green space is planned to be now to a lower, to a lower height, but the same square footage? And so I, again, I, I really am grateful for answering a question that I've been wrestling with a long time, but I, on the other hand, think it really does go back to how the community and the other commissions and the SPRC would have benefited from having a picture of what needs to be at the end of the process as we consider this specific site.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Anyone else? If not, Commissioner Yakimini.
I, I do have one thing, and, and it's, it's, it's just sort of a fun thing I, I thought as we're talking. I know, what is fun tonight? Fun, I know. See? I'm getting accused. I had to go through the county board minutes for another reason. Don't, don't ask me why I've spent hours reading through county board minutes, but from July 14th, 1941, there was the permission for the erection of the hospital in residential Zone A. Mr. Gilbert Hall, President of the Arlington Hospital Association, appeared before the board requesting permission as required by subsection nine of section three of the zoning ordinance to erect a hospital upon the property of this association at 16th Street North in a residential A zone of Arlington County. Upon the motion of Mrs. McGruder duly seconded by Mr. Delashmet, the following resolution was unanimously adopted, resolved that the county board of Arlington County finds that the exterior appearance of the proposed hospital of the Arlington Hospital Association is in keeping with the residential section in which it is located and approve both its appearance and its location upon the property of said association situated upon 16th Street North. So even back in the day, sort of one of the criteria that the county board was looking at was how the hospital, granted low wooden buildings, was addressing the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini, for that wonderful history lesson. I, I appreciate that. In fact, I, thinking about mixed use, which I don't think we're going in that direction, but I did give some thought to it, the wrapping of accessory medical offices around the site to give further activation and maybe some service to the near neighborhood. I did come across a 1953 planning document that, that, 1953, that discussed various kinds of mixes of uses given the use, and among them was a hospital use. So the, the streams of thinking and design and planning are deep and, and long, and I think help us work through these difficult issues. If there are no other comments or questions about outpatient building, let's, let's talk about vehicular access points and garage entrances. There is the issue of the two entrances at George Mason. If two, how would they function? Where would they be? If one, where would it be signalized? Does anyone want to ask Mr. Sellen?
Commissioner Kirin.
Well, I did raise a question at the meeting last week somewhat related to this, and it had to do with the large volume of cars that were projected to use the parking Mr. Sellen.
Dennis Sellen from Department of Environmental Services. Okay.
So my question had been, what does that look like? like? It does sound like a very large volume of cars. And can you operationalize for us? Are they all coming and going at the same time? Are they coming and going on three discrete shifts?
Okay, I'm going to attempt to answer your question. I want to pull back just a little bit and talk about George Mason Drive. This is a street that is designed with four lanes, two lanes in each direction, and a left-turn pocket. It is very similar in design to Columbia Pike and to North Glebe, or to Glebe Road. We have regular traffic data from VDOT on all of these roadways. And if you look at the Highway Capacity Manual, a street like this is designed to carry about 36,800 cars a day. Columbia Pike carries about 26,000. Glebe Road carries about 22,000. This road carries today about 16,000 vehicles per day. It is interesting to note on the graphic to the left that traffic has actually decreased in volume, so that about five years ago, it was carrying 17,000 vehicles per day. So it is already carrying 1,000 vehicles less per day than it was 10, five years ago. Now, and I apologize for the complexity of this spreadsheet, but I have taken these numbers from the traffic study that was done by the consultant. And what you see here are 72 different movements. And so when we have heard discussion about the 2,000 vehicles per day, we really need to look at these different movements, because that traffic is distributed throughout the day, on different streets, in different directions. Some traffic is traveling through. Some traffic will be turning into or out of various access points on the site. So for example, if you look at, and I'm just going to take something from random, 2017, George Mason Drive at 19th Street Northbound, currently, oh, currently, 51 vehicles are making that approach in the morning peak period. That is at 2017. So the build-out year from the traffic study is 2025. That 51 vehicles per hour goes to 131. So 50 vehicles per hour is a little bit less than a vehicle, one vehicle per minute. If you take that to 131, it's a little bit more than two vehicles per minute. And that's really how people experience traffic. You do not experience 2,000 vehicles suddenly rushing in front of your house. You experience them moment by moment. You experience them at the time you're trying to leave your house in the morning or come home in the evening or trying to make that left-hand turn. So that's why the conclusions of the traffic studies show that there's actually very little change in the level of traffic service here, because when you distribute the vehicular movements throughout the site and over time, you see, with a few exceptions, very little change. The largest changes that you're going to see are in 19th Street, because there will be a vehicular access point there, and in George Mason Drive at the new site entry. And what we are doing at those sites, one is to signalize the entry at George Mason Drive, and for 19th Street, we're adding a longer turn pocket, because most of the impact will be from southbound George Mason Drive turning left onto 19th Street. That's a very sort of broad overview of this issue of traffic and the frequent concern that we have heard about 2,000 vehicles a day as an impact of this project.
Commissioner Guerin, follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Sellen. This is very helpful, and I appreciate that you really got it. I think what we're trying to figure out is that does sound like a lot of vehicles. What does that look like? When you said that George Mason is perfectly equipped to handle this level of traffic, how about 19th? That looks and feels so much smaller.
You're correct. 19th Street is currently a, what we call a yield street, in that it is not designed for two vehicles to pass each other. It's 30 feet wide. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing to take some of their own right-of-way to widen the street by six feet. That would make it more of a neighborhood street. And neighborhood streets, we typically classify them as those streets that may have fewer than 1,000 movements per day. And I believe that even with the new vehicular access, we would still satisfy that requirement.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Schroll.
Mr. Sellen, the other night, we heard some testimony about the new signalized intersection, also the fact that, like the gentleman with us tonight, that, you know, his front yard is going to be signalized.
Correct.
Could you address that issue and staff's opinion on what's being proposed versus where we were earlier in the SPRC process when we're thinking about easing 17th?
So the applicant, and I'll go back to the very beginning of the process, and the applicant had proposed two signalized, or two entries to the site at 17th Street North and at the proposed driveway. This is not the best graphic, but this is the only graphic I have. So we then said to the applicant, you know, we would prefer consolidation of vehicular entrances. So the applicant came back with the entrance to, at 17th Street, shown here, signalized, shows that closed and replaced by a signalized entry located here to the north. County staff then said, well, we actually prefer and recommend a signalized entry to be located here at 17th Street North, my clicker's not working very well, here at 17th Street North, and we would allow you to have a right-in, right-out at your preferred entry. So we sort of wavered back and forth on the issue of consolidation of entrances. The applicant has consistently said that they actually prefer their location. They have their reasons. Our reason is primarily from the Ashtoe Green Book, which is officially known as a guide on geometry of, pardon me, I had it all here. It's the Ashtoe Green Book. It does state that there is a preference and a desire not to locate signalized entries across from driveways and across from, which is this condition here. This condition does create an impact for the two single-family residences that are directly across from that intersection. A couple of things that I would state about this, however, is that both of the conditions have advantages and disadvantages. I think the advantages to the county's proposal is that by locating it at an existing street, you do not have the condition of locating a signalized entry across from single-family homes, thereby inconveniencing them. Additionally, it creates a better through movement and vehicular access for the longer vehicles, which are the trucks that would be using the loading entrance. From the applicant's point of view, if I can speak for them, I think that their entry is frankly, in terms of signal progression and signal location, that is more what the county would prefer. If you look at the location of their signal versus, their signal would be located here, the existing signal located here, and then there's another signal located at 16th Street. Those would all be about 500 feet apart, approximately equidistant, and for signal progression, that's actually preferred. We could probably manage ours with some signal timing. Additionally, I know that the hospital currently has a somewhat of a conundrum here when especially new-time, one-time visitors enter, you are immediately faced with a decision point without being exactly clear where you are going. You must turn to the left or to the right. We sort of, that might be replicated here at the county's preferred location. We believe that, again, by some sort of signage and wayfinding, that that could be mitigated. However, we do, this does introduce more turning movements into the entry. In conclusion, I would say that, you know, we do not believe that their solution would fail. We believe that, in fact, it would succeed. We do not believe that it would change in any way the level of service, the traffic flow along George Mason Drive. I think their solution does present a better organization of traffic within the site, and ours may be a little bit more advantageous for traffic outside of the site and particularly for those residential homes that are impacted. Bottom line, we could probably live with this. I think that we've accepted this. And a question was also asked, does this occur elsewhere in the county? And as I've said, we do not prefer this, we do not recommend it, but we have done it. I asked our signal staff if they could identify some other locations where this does occur, and they've given me seven. This is not a full search or conclusive, but it does occur. I've looked at each one of these on Google Maps. In fact, most of these are, or all of these are single-family homes. Most of these also have driveways, and they do have a signal, whether it's a mast arm or a span wire, right in front of those homes. So it does occur, there's precedent. It's not our preferred location, but we can live with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sellen. That's, I appreciate the explanation. I was wondering if the applicant could maybe comment, transportation analysis behind you.
Dennis, can you go back to your alternative? So I think Dennis did a fairly decent job. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Minkowski from Wells and Associates. I just wanted to talk about some other concerns that Dennis did not particularly mention. You know, again, we don't want to recreate a similar condition that happens today at the main entrance. And that, once you turn into the site, it's actually a T, so you have a decision point. You either have to go left or right. In this situation, you actually have an additional option of going through up to the green garage. And by doing that, what that does is it makes it tough for inbound traffic to yield to any kind of pedestrian that would potentially be going north-south through the site, because we don't want to stop that traffic to yield to a pedestrian crossing the driveway. So one of the things that could happen is, in addition to the outbound queues that we've analyzed that will extend back potentially up to 200 feet and block the north-south connector, is that, you know, we'll have pedestrians going north-south to the new outpatient pavilion, and, you know, it creates those additional conflicts that will spill back onto George Mason and potentially impact operations along George Mason. An additional conflict that it creates is the proximity of the existing loop road. Because of its proximity to the intersection, it really is going to cut off any kind of circulation north-south between the property, because more than likely, this would be a restricted movement, and you would not want traffic coming from the southern portion of the site, making these awkward movements through this area. Let's see here. You know, I mentioned the outbound queue. That's really a critical issue to us. When, it's not just a queue that's going to happen during one individual peak hour. It's really a queue that's going to happen and persist throughout the entire day. So that conflict of the vehicles trying to turn left to get to the new outpatient garage, you know, that's going to be a continuous conflict. And again, we'll just be recreating what's happening at the existing signal today. Dennis did mention the fact that, you know, it does provide similar spacing and progression. Having these signals so close together, it's about 325 feet. By the time you add the stop bars in for the crosswalks, you're really under 300 feet of effective storage for southbound traffic. And the analysis shows that you really need a minimum 275 feet before it starts to spill back into the intersection for southbound traffic. So we would be creating a potential issue where southbound through traffic would be queuing into the 17th Street intersection. Something else, number six on here. What we believe that because of the volume of traffic that would be using the new garage on a daily basis, it will create some potential U-turns that may have unintended safety consequences. If you're destined to outpatient pavilion and you're traveling south on George Mason, you're going to see that building, and not every user is going to know to turn into the site and that there's a connector road. So you may start creating U-turn movements to come back and get to that driveway, similarly in the outbound direction. If there's a queue leaving the 17th Street signal, you're going to have vehicles rather turn right and go up to 19th Street, make a U-turn to head south. So you start to create additional conflicts and safety concerns. One thing I just wanted to say about the access point itself, if it was signalized at the proposed location, which we've shown in four different scenarios that we analyzed in the traffic study, and Dennis was correct, that it operates acceptable with minimal queues in all four scenarios, is that the outbound traffic, while there is a driveway in the intersection, that the outbound lanes are positioned so that, you know, it's at the very edge of the house or just north of the house. So any kind of light layer, if you will, would be just north of the house and not necessarily facing into the property.
Thank you very much. Commissioner McSweeney.
Thank you. So I did want to understand exactly what that looks like, though, in the front yard of the person who lives across the street. So actually, I guess there are two houses across the street, so I don't want to assume where that light pole is going to go. But could you actually show us what that looks like on this?
Yeah, so from an infrastructure perspective, it's not going to, it's still conceptually designed. It's obviously not been approved by the county or anything. But it's not, the proposed design is not a design that's similar to the outpatient, or to the existing signal, where the pole and the mast arm are literally in the person's front yard. What we're proposing currently is a pole in the median with a mast arm that shoots directly north for egress traffic, and then one that would be going, I guess, to plan south here for north, for southbound traffic. The only infrastructure that would be on the far side of the road would be two pedestrian push buttons, and those would be located between the curb and the sidewalk.
Commissioner Weir.
I think that this question is for Mr. Ladd, although if it's the applicant that has the information, I welcome it. And forgive me for just failing to find it, but are we confident, how confident are we that the origination of the trips is about equally balanced between cars coming south to the site on George Mason and cars coming north to the site on George Mason? If a supermajority of vehicular trips to the site are coming from the south, then I'm not sure that, you know, or coming from the north, I think that affects whether or not a right-in, right-out is appropriate. I mean, the queuing concern is not a serious concern. Everyone leaving the facility is going back up north, right?
You know, I'd like to defer this to the traffic consultant, because they are far more familiar with the ins and outs and the direction of travel.
It's about 60 to 65% originates from the south.
From the south?
From the south.
Okay. So you would, that's where the U-turn concern at 19th Street, is that what you were saying?
For people that were leaving that wanted to turn left, yeah, you would have to turn right and then make a U-turn.
And there's, you're confident that it wouldn't be sufficient simply to manage the cars that are leaving, to encourage them to turn right when coming out of the garage, to use the signalized exit onto George Mason instead?
I think it really becomes, it really becomes a concern of what's happening at that internal intersection next to the 1715 building.
Okay.
It's going to be a very congested location, pedestrians going north-south. It's really a four-way, offset four-way intersection, if you see the plan here, because this leg is offset from what we're proposing here, just because there's a building right here, and this road can't be moved further north.
Okay. So about, so then about 65 to 35?
Correct.
I just want to do a quick time check. I'm thinking we'd like to wind up the I'm thinking we'd like to wind up the discussion portion of our work tonight at around 10 and have motions starting around 10. If that, if anyone has a different idea, let me know now. Not, let's, I think we should move on to parking. Does anybody want to kick off the conversation about parking? Commissioner McSweeney, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's been brought up tonight, and I know that I asked it the other night last Thursday. So what prevented you, in thinking about this site, what prevented you from using more of the site for underground parking?
I'm going to step back just a little bit so that everyone on the commission understands where we were and where we are and what we did and what we thought about, because it's a really, really important question. I know Mr. Lantelme was asking us this a lot, so I better be prepared to answer it. So we started this process when we went to the first SPRC with a parking garage that had 2,093 parking spaces. It was 95 feet in height, and it was seven stories above, and it had two stories below. We were asked to consider ways to reduce the massing, setbacks, reduce the number, reduce the height. And the general goal was to see if we could get the garage to be approximately the same massing and setback as the adjacent 1715 building, which is 67 feet in height. So there were three things we looked at. The hospital looked at three different options. One is extending the parking under the outpatient pavilion building. The second was extending the parking underneath the pad site. And then the third was going down deeper, below the current garage. And then there's also the possibility of taking all the parking and putting it underground. So those are, you know, all of the options, using the entire site. So in terms of extending it under the outpatient pavilion building, what we did is we at Skanska actually do borings to see where the water is and where the rock is. And at two levels of underground parking, we hit water. At three levels, we're still in water, but if you go below that, you end up starting to hit rock. The biggest problem with putting parking underneath the outpatient pavilion is that the outpatient pavilion above it has a very, very special grid system, because it's laid out as a medical facility. And the column grid's 24 feet, I don't know what I'm saying, but I know the facts that my architect gave me, and you would have to carry the grid down into the garage. And what ends up happening is we can only get two cars in per grid, according to the analysis I asked them for. So we end up with hugely high cost with a very low return in terms of the number of parking spaces. We also happen to like the size of the current footprint of the garage as it goes down. It's about the same as the Blue Garage, if you've experienced that, that's not a small garage. But we also don't want a garage that's like Courthouse Plaza, where everybody's always wandering around. Our offices are in here, always asking me where they are. They're, they can never find their car. The other, just more technical, and these are not things, this is just basic industry standard, we have two MRIs that are on the garden level, and we also have a nuclear medicine function there, and it's best not to have parking below it. In fact, our MRIs and these other facilities elsewhere on the campus have absolutely no underground parking, they're located on ground without anything under it. So the added cost of adding two levels of underground parking underneath the outpatient pavilion is $17 million. So there's the economic part of it, which is the last part of the SD ordinance, it says the continued provision of medical services. It's just too big a hit for the hospital. Extending it under the empty chair, it's the reverse situation. So you build a garage, and then it limits what you can put above it, because you, now we would have to carry that grid in, and if we wanted to do a similar grid to what we're doing in this office building, this outpatient pavilion, that would limit our possibilities. Again, we did the check, and we're going to hit, if we put two levels under there, we're going to hit rock, and the added cost of adding two levels there would be $18.3 million. So where did we end up? We ended up taking our parking garage, reducing it from 95 to 67 feet, seven stories to five stories above grade, we added a level of underground parking, and then we took a diet on the number of parking spaces. We took out 350 spaces. We did not want to take out the 350. We feel like we need them, but we felt it was an important compromise in the process, so we did remove the 350 spaces. And the end result is that 42% of the parking is underground, and it's half, the parking garage's half the size of the 1625 building, that's 151 feet, that building, to the top of the penthouse. And the end result is the parking's below the zoning ordinance, it's below the ITE standard, it's below the industry standard, so we're not over-maximizing parking on the campus. So that was our reasoning, and the parking garage as it stands today is $53 million total, is that right, Michael? And if we had to put all the parking underground, which we looked at, it would be $93 million, and that is really just not feasible. So we feel we've got a good balance in terms of meeting the setbacks, having the tiering, and having a sensitive treatment of the parking garage, and a nice balance between underground and above-ground parking.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Commissioner Lantelme.
Thank you for that. I wish we had gotten that, like, at the first or second SPRCs. However, what you didn't answer is why, I understand about the buildings, and I always understood about the MRIs needing to be on the ground, and why you didn't want parking under those. That does always make sense. When you look at George Mason, the entrance there, it's already dug out. It's already essentially one story below grade at the George Mason end of things. You're going to be needing to fill that in anyway. Where you have the pad site, when that building gets built, it's already going to have to have essentially a road going through it. So however you configure that, it's going to have to accommodate that pass-through to get to the garage. If you, did you look at whether you could, in front of the pad site, have underground parking there, because it's dug out already, and just cap that with a two-level pass-through to get to the other garage?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think it's a good question. One of the things that we looked at is balancing the site. So a cut-and-fill is a typical approach when you're looking at balancing a site. So that means, how much dirt and ground are we taking out of the site versus bringing into the site? So we're currently still, even with balancing the site, we're still taking off, I think, two, almost three times more site dirt that we're excavating versus balancing. So we're not bringing in dirt to balance the site and to fill that in, we're actually using the site, the dirt that's onsite and the rock that's onsite to fill that area. So it's part of the balancing act. The space that we have that goes directly into the garage and the lanes that go in will always remain there, and so those lanes will not be altered. And the reason that we left the swale in the middle of the site, which we're utilizing as a sunken garden today, is that's a potential place for more basement, right? We talked about the future space. And one of the key elements that might go there is oncology. And so we think about linear accelerators, future 17 magnets, things that would have to be excavated and put in those types of spaces, we're planning for those in the future. And so those are all elements that we're considering. How, you know, those magnets and turning movements and access and closeness to garages and all that heavy metal and vibration are things that we have to consider as it relates to the sensitivity of those machines, long-term in a medical facility, which you wouldn't get in a regular office building.
I'll argue with it here, but I do think this is something that should be addressed, because again, the pad site, it would only be the two, those lanes that are going to be going through it nonetheless, whether you have it one level or two levels going through, you're already digging that dirt out. Whether you're transferring it from one end of the site to the other or having it go off-site, you're still digging it one way or another. So most of the expenses from the digging, you might have a little more transportation cost to get it out, but to just transfer it to the George Mason side and fill it in, that's a cost anyway. Having certain number of spots underground surrounding the pad site could be done. You could probably get a couple hundred parking spots in there. I know you've done studies that people don't like parking underground come there, but employees would be presumably happy to park anywhere on the site, whether it's above-ground or underground. So you don't have to worry about the marketing issues there. I still think that looking at that and what the cost benefit is would be a useful exercise.
Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. A quick question, understanding some of the challenges, and was any consideration given to the best use of some of the underground spaces not being to parking and perhaps being to some of those services that you mentioned, most specifically, I'm thinking MRIs, that way they could be on the ground level and not be impacted?
Yeah, so MRIs, they're magnetic built, you know, they're magnetic residents.
I've spent more years of my life than I care to think about.
So you, you know, I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
I've spent a lot of time on them.
So you know that they're sensitive to metal and moving metal and heavy metal, right? And so trying to convert parking, is it, was the question about converting parking into?
The question was considering the grid structure underneath it that may allow you to do broader underground parking, had it been considered as using that same grid structure, which you say is so amenable to the service delivery for MRIs stationed, because I believe I've been in underground MRIs before.
Yeah, so you can put MRIs below ground, right? You can put them there. It's all about vibration and movement, right, and the adjacencies and the efficiencies. And so in this case, putting, separating out the MRIs and putting them below ground separate from the rest of the functions, we'd still be concerned about vibration and the movement of heavy metal in close proximity to those. So the cars and the vibration are the major things that we try to avoid in good healthcare planning.
Anyone else? Commissioner Weir? I'd like to try to move on, but this is, these are key issues, so carry on.
A smaller answer than the last few, which were all very helpful. I had asked about the future permeability of the parts of the parking garage designated as patient visitor and the parts of the parking garage designated employee. The sheet that is the basis of my question is G8001, and it looks like the only, it looks like you've got permanent barriers separating the bottom two levels of patient visitor parking and a Jersey barrier separating, or a movable temporary barrier separating it on the top floor. And I just want to find out if I'm right in reading that and what, if so, animated the decision to permanently build the structure such that you would have no flexibility down the road between those two areas?
And to be movable, so it's not designed to be in place, so it does have flexibility in turn.
On all three of the floors or just on the top floor?
All of them.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're, you're right.
So I'd just declare.
Yes.
The way that you have planned this garage is that you're able to allocate areas designated for patients, whatever you want, and could work with entirely like this based on your actual needs.
I think that the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think.
No, no, I mean, the reality is, is that this is aligned to fit the need of the patient population, the majority of the patient population. And so if the patient population goes up, then that can move, and you can add more patients parking to accommodate that in the future.
And still accessing the site through the?
Through the front.
Through the George Mason site.
Right, exactly.
And that's really the critical part of, that's the unspoken critical part of all of this, right? Is if half of your employees are taking the cash out, then, you know, you don't want a, and you have more demand for patient parking than you anticipate, we have a real problem if the way that the traffic flow looks is that everyone, all the patients are coming in through Edison.
Yeah, no, so the reality would be is that everyone could still maintain that front access off of George Mason. So if the whole building was patient population, then everyone would use that front entrance.
Commissioner Yakimini.
I think we might have talked about this at SPRC, but I'm just curious, why is it that there isn't a dual entrance off of George Mason that accommodates patients and employees since the spaces are fungible inside? I realize that would create more traffic on George Mason, but it is an arterial as opposed to having to have an employee entrance on 19th across from single-family houses.
It was, it's really to keep the patient and employee traffic separate, so that it removes any sort of conflicts.
And what would those be?
Well, you would have, you would have employees having to come in off of George Mason, then either traverse to the circular ramp to get to the lower levels, or vice versa, go to the upper levels, and adding additional conflicts and traffic through that area that isn't necessarily patient visitor traffic, just adds additional traffic through those areas.
How does that work when we, when we convert some of the spaces to patient spaces?
What would happen is you would have, on that circular ramp, you would have to have some wayfinding that says that patient visitors would come back through where they went out through those partitions to go back out onto George Mason versus exiting onto Edison or 19th.
Thank you.
All right. Can we make it short so we can move on?
The last question is, to what extent is this garage, is the way that this garage is going to be constructed, such that parts or all of any particular floor, one floor, two floors, could be repurposed to programmatic or medical space, should trends warrant it 30, 40, 50 years from now?
The design of the garage is a precast garage, which is not a cast-in-place garage would allow you to maybe take that over in the future. The reality, though, is that the needs of converting garage to outpatient functions, it would be cheaper to tear it down and build new than it would be to try to set it up for some sort of future use that we're not sure about. So the plumbing, the electrical, the grids, all of that, it doesn't make economic sense.
Great. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Weir. I was actually going to ask that as well. Let's move on to the TDM and Public Transportation, Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Thursday, I asked the applicant to kind of walk through the cash out on page 91, and we just kind of want to follow up on that. If you could kind of walk through how that's envisioned for an actual person. So I'm, I don't have a car, I bike to work every day. Walk me through how that's dealt with, maybe on a weekly basis, monthly, yearly, how does that work?
Sure. My name's Justin Shore, I'm at Wellesley and Associates. So I think the first thing to point out is that this is probably more of an exchange than a cash out. I think the term is one that's used more commonly in a more urban setting, where there is a market price for the, you know, for the space, and exchange for that market price, the employee is given the literal cash value. I think a more appropriate term here is an exchange. And so what would happen is in exchange for, you know, a key fob to enter the garage that an employee would typically have, they would forego that key fob, or at least the key fob would be programmed in a way that would only allow them, you know, if they did access it, they would be charged a visitor rate. And so when you forego that right to park in that spot, you're then looking at another way to get there. And so you can either take that in the form of, well, and so what we're saying is that when you forego that space, you are taking a cash, well, a value of up to $50, which right now is being determined by the cost of the condo spaces and what are being charged per space that an employee of the condos would pay. And that market rate right now is $50. And so what would happen is when you come and you're basically saying, hey, I no longer want to have the right to park in that space, you're given then the cash, that $50 value that you can either take in the form of a transit benefit, or if you're a cyclist, you just, you know, apply that money however you would. It used to be there was a tax platform for you to take the money as a cyclist, that doesn't exist now in the new tax law, but you could take that cash, that equivalent, excuse me, equivalent value and apply it in whatever way to pay for your bike maintenance or whatever.
So it's essentially $50 per month continuously, this is, as you just mentioned, this is post-tax dollars if you're a cyclist. And the key fob is, for the parking is coming pre-tax, correct? Essentially, right? I mean, it's not being that benefit.
Well, there's no.
Equivalent tax right for that.
talking about is that if you did choose to use the transit benefit, that could be done in a pre-tax manner. And so that would, there would be a benefit to doing that. Not every form of transportation has that same opportunity, but where we could do that, that's what we would try to do, to make it as beneficial to the employees as possible.
Okay. Mr. Shore, I appreciate that explanation. I do appreciate the applicant, you know, working this in to the proposal. I've been doing some kind of back of the envelope math, and I do think the value of the parking that you're constructing is probably worth more than what's being provided, the kind of value of a space. This is a good step. I appreciate the applicant doing this. I know I was harping on the parking the whole time, so thank you for doing this. I think it's a good step. Control here, so, so thanks for doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Gigli. I also have this question. So I have a question for Steph. I'm on page 91, the condition. Second sentence, it currently reads, "The program shall provide transit transportation subsidy value to each non-driving-alone commuter equal to the subsidy value of parking in the new garage." As was alluded to in our previous conversation, there's a great deal of tax incentives both the employer on the transportation transit side study. So I'm asking Steph, do we feel that this language compels the applicant to provide a cash, what were the exact words you wanted to use? I just want to try to keep my vernacular clean.
An exchange or?
Cash exchange for those people who would not be using transit or transportation subsidies, for example, walkers.
It's my understanding that, Commissioner, that we have never required an applicant to provide a cash payment. The term parking cash out is sort of a, a term of use in the transit industry, but we've not required it. And I do not believe that this condition would require a cash payment.
Thank you. Commissioner Schroll, I may be making a little bit more motion to more clearly hold our applicant, who seems to be amenable to a cash transfer, right? Exchange, exchange for our walkers and bikers now that our tax code has so kindly changed, making employers maybe less favorable to that type of access, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else on the TDM, Public Transportation? All right, let's move on to the pedestrian access and campus layout. Pedestrian, we were told, I think, late in the game that there would be a north, it's east-west transit pedestrian pathway, but I think there was some skepticism expressed about how inviting that would be to pedestrians because you have to go through lanes of traffic, you have to go through the garage. And I think we wanted to see more illustration of what that would be.
So we have a, we have a perspective that would be the entry perspective, a plan view of what it would be like coming in, and then we've got the rendering or the aerial that shows where all the pathways coming through. So we'll start here. So this would be the, on 19th Street. So before, we showed a oblique perspective and you couldn't quite see the entrance. So this would be us walking through, from, from the sidewalk into the pass-through, where you'd walk through covered area into or around the vestibule that is right in front of you, and then be able to go then from there around into the plaza. So from a, this is the entry perspective, and then if you, can you go to the plan view? So the plan view, the hatched area that you're seeing there is the view that we were just looking at. So you would come in, you'd have covered and vehicular protection with bollards up until the striped lanes. You'd cross that and then be able to go directly into the vestibule or walk around the stairs and elevators, and then be able to access the garden on the other side. So that would be the through traffic. So the route, if you go to the aerial view, would then be able to go where it says the 12-foot wide going through, you would actually, instead of going all the way through there, you'd actually cut through the garden and come across the top of the site.
So that, that, that is the north, that's an additional north-south.
Right.
Which connects to the east-west.
Right. So go, so go then to the east-west view. So this is the lower portion, so above where that retaining wall is and the, and the trees are, above that is the road going directly or the lanes going directly into the parking garage. So this is the lower level, and this would be the view walking towards Edison Street. So the bridge going across is the bridge connecting into the 1715 building, and then you'd go directly under that bridge to then be able to connect up through to the Edison Street.
Does anybody have a follow-up question? Yes, Commissioner Morton?
Thank you for bringing those. They're helpful. Do you have a similar view from Edison? Like, I'm sorry, before I asked the question.
No, we don't.
Like the view from the mid-block. Sorry, not Edison, from 19th Street?
So 19th Street was the?
What would it look like from, like, the mid-block of 19th?
So if we were step, pulled back from this point?
Yeah.
So if we, we'd have to go back to last, last week's view that showed what that would, that, that oblique view that we, that we just talked about. There, oh, back. So the entrance, the sidewalk and the entrances would be right there, underneath that square picture frame. That would be the entrance into the facade. So from, you're standing in the street view from right now, looking at the entrance.
And if you were in the house, like, right across the street, you don't have that view?
I'm sorry, I can't.
If you were in the house, like, right across the street, you don't have that view?
If you're inside, directly, I don't have the view directly from the house across. No, I don't.
You're walking through the interior of the hospitals that open all the time?
So the, we talked about having the pedestrian pass-through open the same hours of the operation of the hospital. So from, I think it was from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, is the, is the pass-through open and accessible through the building?
Thank you.
Okay.
What about the one on, that you're showing on Edison? It's not enclosed, so it's open all the time?
Yeah, it's open 24/7.
It's the one that's underneath the?
Yeah, it's the only one that passes through the garage, yes.
Commissioner Yakimini?
I know we've, we asked this sometime, a couple times, I think, at SPRC, and, and we've heard about it, you know, from, from the neighborhood, and that is the, the heavy architectural character that is created by the illusion of the parking garage with the outpatient pavilion. And if there are ways that we could consider trying to break up that mass in some way, to have some daylight, and I suspect that the answer is that it cuts out some parking spaces, that if we would, if we would make an open-air arch that's two stories tall, that would go to the center of the site, or something like that, that it, it cuts out some spaces. But what it could do is to actually celebrate a pedestrian connection and make it such, and it also helps break down the mass of the wall that occurs, that's sort of the L shape that goes from Edison around to 19th. And I think that has been a recurring theme from the neighbors. It's not just about the massing and the height and the transitions, it's also about the, the continuous nature that, you know, two buildings actually become one. And how is it that, for the sake of pedestrians and for the sake of the permeability and trying to recall some campus, that that can be separated? And I don't think you can answer that tonight, because we asked it before, but I want to say that that's, I think that is what we were all looking for. It wasn't just about how to shove a person through the building. It really was about trying to get back to some of the campus, because even when we look down on the site plan, well, maybe that's what we're getting to next, right, is asking to see a view of all the pedestrian connections on the site.
So that was the, the last exhibit on the previous slide deck, Michael, that had the arrows going through.
So what we see here is actually the highest percentage of the pedestrian activity is all pushed to the edges of the site. There's, there's very little of it that is allowed to occur or planned to occur in the site itself. The north-south one is, we know, internal, so no, no air. The east-west goes next to the loading dock, as I recall. Is that not true for the loading area here? And sort of covered, so is somewhat tunnel-like. And then there's the precarious, you know, it continues in a nature that is somewhat precarious up to where we were thinking about the entrance at 17th Street. So when we think about how the site is organized today, again, granted, old buildings, two-story, not it, but when we think about the fact that, that people could literally see from one side of the neighborhood, from Edison through to George Mason, and the neighbors on George Mason could somewhat communicate with the neighbors behind, that all of that goes away. All of it. Because of the choice of, of the arrangement of the massing of the buildings and the arrangement. So it's, and where we do have the connections, they are subsumed essentially by the buildings. So while I know I continue to beat the dead horse of the PDSP, one of the things that we would have looked for would have been an organization of pedestrian connections that were more campus-like for the entire campus, knowing that we can't redesign right now or rebuild the other end of the site, but the southern end, but that at some future point, there, in the long-range PDSP and in the long-range plans, we would begin to knit that together again. So I just say that, that it is an extremely auto-oriented extension that is being proposed for Edison. There's just, there's just no way around it. And I, I was hopeful more of a break in a building, something that we, that could be used more in a real human sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini. I want to go back very quickly. Commissioner Weir had one, one additional question about the TDM.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very, probably a very straightforward factual question. For, for everyone who drives to VHC, full-time staff, part-time staff, contractors, et cetera, and parks on one of the garages on the campus, or a VHC-associated garage at not adjacent campus, is it now the case, or has it, in any kind of generous definition of recently been the case, that anyone pays any periodic rate to park, monthly, weekly, annually, or is it the case that everyone who's not a patient, or everyone who's not driving there on any kind of regular basis gets free parking?
Charles Fletcher with Virginia Hospital Center. The, our patients and visitors pay $5 per day as a rate. Our staff do not pay to park on campus. The condo association employees pay $50 a month to, for utilization of those garages currently. And same with contractors, would pay $5 a day if they were coming to do business at the hospital.
Even independent, people who are classified as an independent contractor but work 2,000 billable hours or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to move on to open space, and I think we could start with a question about where are there opportunities for permanent public open spaces on the Edison site? And I guess also by extension on the entire site, but let's start with the Edison site. It, there's a temporary sunken garden, which goes away, and there's more building. And I guess if I could allude to Phase 8 of the master plan, ultimately, the Edison site is completely built out with large structures, several office buildings, the garage, which I think we have, there are many, many issues that have been brought up, and we'll probably discuss them again, and, and very little scope for open space. We don't know how temporary the current open space that's been exhibited in the SPRC is. So I guess we, we'd like you to address those issues.
So, so Chairman, you're, you're asking the short-term question and the long-term question?
Well, how short is the short-term and in the long-term? Where is the urban relief in a site that looks to be totally built out in every possible way?
So what we have on the table today, just to make sure we set the table for the amount of open spaces, we have about 1.36 acres of the 5.57 acre site that takes the form of open space or buffering around the perimeter of the site. So you have an entry plaza that's 9,600 square feet. We have an entry garden, which is 11,000 square feet. We have a welcome garden that's 11,000. Corner park on 19th and Edison is 3,000. George Mason, the buffering is 4,800. 19th Street buffers, 9,000 square feet, and Edison buffer is 10,800. I think it's fair to say, all the buffers, the corner park, all of those are in perpetuity because of the way the buildings are arranged. The only one that I can tell you with certainty will in the future be redeveloped is the entry garden, which was also referred to as the sunken garden, and that is the future pad site for a building. As we had mentioned, the first thing that's going to probably occur is the power plant and the green garage, which is in a maybe 10-year time period. Sometime after that, maybe it could be 15, 20 years, the pad site would develop. So that will remain as open space for at least 15 to 20 years, at which point there would be a building constructed on that site. So that would be the, in the short term, the, the loss of what we are currently proposing. What is on the screen right there is the final phase of our master plan. This was the, the more in-depth master plan that the staff asked us to present, and I just think this is just so amazing, because you see we've created a central spine and essentially centered all of the density in the middle of the site, and the perimeter is, in fact, all open space and buffer. It also helps us to completely reorganize the access to the site. You can see the light on the right side, that becomes the new entrance. You're not entering and having to make a quick decision, do I go right, do I go left, you know, and then when you make the right, you have to deal with handicap people backing up. Everyone's experienced it trying to get to the garages. So this is an end game that would provide a loop road around the entire campus, provides open space along the perimeter, preserves some open space on the Edison site, and also preserves all the buffers that we're showing today.
I would just challenge the description that the loop road would go around the entire campus. It, it doesn't go around the Edison site.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
I stand corrected on that, Chairman.
Could you, could you just, I, I didn't have a opportunity to write down all the numbers, but if you subtracted the open space assigned to the buffers on the perimeter, what is the total, I would call it usable. The buffering, for example, on 19th Street, I don't think is actually, the utility is to screen the garage, but it, it doesn't, I don't see it as allowing people to comfortably sit or want to sit or stand or meander on that area. So you understand, you're, I see you're subtracting.
I'm doing math.
Yeah.
Which is the one thing in my life I'm comfortable with, not the law, but math. Okay, so is it fair to count in your question? I'm taking out all the buffers. I'm going to leave the corner park because that is a feature that is in the site plan conditions. So we'd be looking So we'd be looking at the entry plaza, the entry garden, the welcome garden, and the corner park.
So there are a couple of parks. Okay.
So that's 22, 23, 24, 25, 35,000 square feet. And that's a little under an acre.
And that, that endures for 10 to 20 years, is what you're saying?
Probably 20, yeah.
And then when the, can you just remind me which of the gardens goes away?
Entry garden, which is.
Which is deep into, deeper into the site?
Correct. That is correct.
And how, how big is that?
11,000 square feet.
So half of that goes away, about?
No.
A third?
Maybe a quarter.
Okay. Does anybody have further questions? Commissioner Yakimini?
I, for staff, for open space purposes, have we, for the total, for staff, has the empty pad site, the green that occupies the empty pad site, been subtracted?
So for the, there's not a landscaped open space requirement in the SD district?
I know there's not a requirement.
Like there are in some other districts. Here, there's, we use lot coverage in SD, and so lot coverage includes landscaped areas. Lot coverage is basically everything that is not building or spaces you can drive on. So anything that's not for buildings or cars.
So when we would ask staff about open space, do you, do you count the part that is actually a pad site?
Yes. It's, it's in, it's accounted for as part of their, their lot coverage is based on the proposal that is.
At the time.
That is proposed. When the site plan is amended in the future to construct the pad site, there would be a recalculation of the lot coverage.
Right. So that green is still somewhat ephemeral?
Yes.
Yes. That's what I thought. So I actually don't want to look at Phase Eight, because, again, it's a vision by the applicant. It's not any accepted plan. But it is interesting, because all of the green space is centered in, inside its own little world, with the heavy barbell ends of the hospital on either end, and particularly weighted at Edison and Nineteenth. It's just so amazingly obvious when you see it portrayed this way. And if this is our end game, then we really have failed. So hopefully, since it's only the hospital's vision, it is not the real end game.
Commissioner Guerin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A comment and then a question for staff. Oh, please bring that slide back. I had the same reaction that Commissioner Yakimini did. To look at that and see all the green space in the middle, when what we've been discussing, and it sounds like the neighbors have been discussing for 15 years, is a little more setback from the single-family homes, is extremely frustrating. That's my comment. My question for staff is, in this submission, the landscape plan is not as detailed as we've seen in some others. And under what conditions can we expect a detailed landscape plan that spells out exactly what tree, what shrub, in each area? I know we've seen those in other plans, and so that's really facilitated our review. So we've known, oh, here you have a bunch of red buds, here you have some spice bush, that's not in here. And I would just like some understanding from, there's a list of what won't be planted, there's a list of trees and shrubs and grasses, but it's not specified what's where. And I just want some more understanding, can we expect that most cases? If it's an option, I'd love to see that every time, so that we have that information and maybe don't have to get into the weeds at the hearing.
So, so to address your question, the, for the 4.1 level of detail that we get in the landscape plans is primarily to get an overall, it's more conceptual. It's a conceptual sense of what the landscaping would be, and for staff's purposes, we use it to determine, are they meeting the tree canopy requirement? Are they meeting some, some other requirements and policies that we have? Or can they be met? And then, of course, post-approval is when we do the final landscape plan, which is exactly what gets planted where. And we have very detailed standards for trees that, trees that we love, trees that we like, invasive species that should be planted under no circumstances. So those are reviewed by the county's landscape architect, the county's urban forester.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. Not to belabor this point, but I can recall another SPRC, and it was an amendment to a project. I chaired it, and I remember this coming up. We actually had the specific plants in the locations. And so I guess I want to know what, why do we get so much variation?
And there is, there is, if you look at the landscape plans with the, with the 4.1, I can't give you the exact sheet.
I see.
But there is a planting schedule.
So there is more detail. It's just not included in what we received.
It's in, it's in the 4.1 plans that you've received.
Can you tell me where? Because I've looked in the pages.
It's L 501.
Okay.
Aaron Schreiber with the Planning Division. The landscape plan sheets are in the L sheet at the back of the submission.
Yeah, that's what I've looked at.
The planting schedule is on L 503.
What I'm asking about is, when we look at the actual diagrams, and it'll show a tree, what kind of a tree is that? We've had greater specificity in some of these than others. And maybe it's not something to be answered now. I definitely think it's for staff, not the applicant. But I would like to hear that, and it reflects some of the comments we heard from the community last week as well. We had this with Shushan's amendment. We had very specific identification of what was planted where. And I don't know if that's because it was an amendment, or if we can expect to get that in some cases. And I understand that there is a post-approval planting plan, but when this has come up, we've also understood that developers have to decide what they want to plant very early on in the schedule, which is why we don't get a lot of opportunity to make changes three years out. So somebody does have an idea what they're planting where. They have a list. It's just not specific here, and it has been in other cases. And that's all I'll say.
And, and I think at, at a higher level, that statement is generally true for all aspects of a 4.1 plan. We have, in some cases, we have more details. In some cases, we have less details. In all cases, they meet our minimum requirements for the amount of detail that's provided. And some applicants just provide more information in some areas. And I think we could point to areas with this application where they're providing more information about how the parking garage works than we see in most site plan applications. So, you know, we can, we can certainly ask the applicant to provide additional landscaping if, if that's something that's, that's important.
In general, in the future, we would like to have that, if it's available, so we can see in advance of a public hearing. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerin. Commissioner Schroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask the applicant, on page TP5, there are some of the trees that were invasives, but they're being preserved, and I'm wondering if the applicant can speak to why?
Particular, did you mind repeating on which area?
There are several trees in the tree survey that are invasive species, and they're listed as being preserved. I want to know why.
Yeah. Well, the reason for preserving trees is we were trying to keep as many of what was there as possible. That was one of the goals as part of the, you know, preservation of existing trees. You know, in terms of sort of our palette, and just to answer a little bit on Commissioner Guerin's comment before, the, the planting plan does provide a framework with most of the trees called out. The specific shrubs and ground cover have not been called out, because we're really trying to provide the framework for, for the, for the plan and for the gardens and the open space. You know, there's a lot of discussion about some of the trees that are on the perimeter, and it was, you know, our perception that the neighbors wanted to preserve as many of the trees as possible. We did talk about potentially removing some, especially evergreens in the rear and some of those. And the consensus was that for now, those will stay, because they provide a buffering.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Orton?
Hi. Thank you. I wanted to echo some things Chairman Siegel was saying about the open space. And we tend to talk about open space in a very scientific way, but I think we should really also be thinking about open space in terms of fostering some sort of public It seems now like the main area that you're trying to achieve that with is going to go away eventually, the sunken garden. A lot of the other open space is just really seen as, as buffering. And it kind of emphasizes the point that Commissioner Yakimini was making, even about that north-south pedestrian cut-through could be an opportunity to be some sort of meaningful celebratory public space, as opposed to just viewing, you know, the green right now is sort of buffering or shielding the public from the building. So my, one of my questions is, was there any consideration given to creating a more kind of meaningful public space out of what's now just buffering around the perimeter?
Ms. Rodriguez, again, I don't know if there are any graphics that we can pull out, because I think the focus on this conversation has been the sunken garden, which is the only component that it's, it's, you know, it may have a lifespan of 15 years or whatever it may be. But there are other gardens. The entry plaza, which is the one that is at the front, is actually the main sort of public space. And I think from the very beginning, this, this place was described as the place where all of the community, the users, the doctors, the nurses, the visitors, and the neighbors would come together. And it's very porous, and the idea is really for the community to feel like it is a public space. It wasn't designed with walls or hedges or anything. There is, it's very, very porous. There is a number of seating opportunities. There is a water feature, there are shade structures, there is a layering of trees, there's ornamental trees, there is all the seasonality. It is a fully integrated, actually, the landscape, you know, the gestures, as you can see them there, is really these, these gestures that bring people into the site. I mean, we designed this very different from most outpatient buildings, where you are dropped off, you go into a building, you leave, you're never part of the space. This is not how this has been designed. Even the drop-off area is part of that entry plaza. You can see those gestures going down all the way into the sunken garden. You know, as opposed to some of the other open space in this campus, and there's nothing, you know, some wonderful spaces, this was really designed as a public space. It was not designed as leftover green space, this was designed as a public space. The welcome garden, that was also added as part of the redesign of this project, is also a series of smaller gardens. Some of the patients have come to us and said, we would love to have, for example, a garden for, to celebrate breast cancer. This particular institution has done a lot for a lot of people in this community. There are several members of the community that have talked to us about that, and we've looked at opportunities to have that. The idea is really to bring the community into these spaces. And those conversations have been taking place with different citizens of the area. I don't know if that's clear, because we've never really had those conversations, but there's a lot of thinking behind these spaces, and it's not a thought-out. And while this may appear in the screen that there is, you know, that the open space is all, all central, there is something very strong about that gesture, too. There is, sometimes there is a danger of having open space being little pieces everywhere. What this creates is a central green space that provides a relief for a facility like this. I mean, I don't know, many of you have been in hospitals, but I know that every time I go to a hospital, I'm always stressed out, or, you know, you know, usually, unless you're delivering a baby, when you go to a hospital, you're very, you know, you know, stressed, worried, and nature is a huge component of really the experiential part of being on a facility like this. So it was not, you know, diminished at all in this, in the thinking of this proposal. And it was really very much an integral part of, of the overall experience.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, especially because I'm new and I didn't participate in any of the SPRC meetings prior to this. So this is also part of my second question. Was, was the community involved with the design that you're talking about? And?
Not necessarily in the design process, but as part of the SPRC, we did have conversations. Now, SPRC, as you know, is divided into different subjects. So, you know, it's not like it's a, it's that iterative. So we did have a section in open space, and I think we did go over a lot of these components.
I, Ms. Rodriguez, who is very passionate about her landscaping, and deservedly so, did do a presentation, and, and we had some discussion. I will say, it was not in-depth. And a lot of that was because I think there was a, it was particularly at the last SPRC meeting, and there was a desire from the applicant to know, what did people want at, particularly around the, the perimeter? And the neighborhood wasn't prepared to deal with that, because they were still dealing with the massing of the building. And I do know of some of the members of the community of Arlington, not of the neighborhood, who have suggested gardens and, and different things. And, and I think they were provided, I, I think for me, having it concentrated along George Mason isn't the same feeling as if we could have had some somehow between the garage and the outpatient. To have it penetrate more into the site, I think, links all of the edges and would make it more meaningful.
I don't disagree.
That's not the building you had to work with.
I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, obviously, but there are certain constraints on a site that is urban, it has some, you know, a finite number of square footage and acreage. So there is a, there is a push and pull, and I don't disagree at all with that, it's just sort of, how do you play the functional aspects and the functional needs, which is not the part that I was dealing with particularly, but, you know, but it is, you know, it is a balancing act, and we, as a team of professionals, kind of work together to sort of create all those things. But it's true, there was a lot of conversation about the buffering, and the buffering, you know, we worked quite a bit together on that, because it was the idea of sort of, we did push the building quite a bit, there was the idea of sort of burming, the layering of planting, the idea of creating even a, a corner park that was really more a pocket park for, for the neighborhood. So there is, there's just a lot of different things that were discussed as, as part of this. And it's true that the neighborhood wasn't at the end sort of ready to discuss whether it was, you know, more of an evergreen treatment, whether it was more layering, whether there was more burming. And, and I think that's still on the table, to sort of make sure that we can do the best we can to provide that, that buffering to those edges.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that was a very useful discussion. I learned far more with that question than we were really able to tackle for the reasons Commissioner Yakimini mentioned during the SPRC. I have one more category, and then I think we'll go to motions. The behavioral health issues that were brought up on September 6th. Does anybody have a particular question at this point about that? Then Commissioner McSweeney, yes?
Yes, thank you. We had received some testimony, and specifically about the CR2 funding. And the question, I think, was posed to the applicant, if they were open, I think it was Naomi Verdugo who gave this testimony. And the question was, is the applicant open to, to the language that was proposed and to actually funding these juvenile services? Or services for juveniles?
Just so the commission knows what was requested, so I can frame that, so we know what we're talking about. The request is the crisis response program, known as CR2, and the request was for two additional clinicians for the children's regional crisis response program for a five-year period. So that was the request, is put on the table. The cost associated with that is about 200,000 per year, or 1,000,000. The cost associated with that is about $200,000 per year or $1 million for a five-year period. And Virginia Hospital Center, as we have reiterated many times, dedicates themselves toward providing, you know, much charity and many other contributions to the Arlington community. And they feel very uncomfortable making a million-dollar contribution towards something that is not solely for Arlington residents and will benefit Prince William Alexandria, Fairfax, et cetera. And we also don't see this as maybe just a short-term solution. There's no long-term solution here. And the hospital's concerned at the end of the five-year period, everybody's going to be looking at them saying, you know, you guys need to continue this, and they've only budgeted the million dollars. They're going to get used to having the two clinicians. But the primary concern here is that this is a million-dollar commitment, and it doesn't go solely to Arlington. And this hospital really wants to focus on its immediate community.
Okay. Commissioner Yakimini?
No, I think Commissioner McSweeney has a question on her face. I did want to ask for a little bit more information about who this actually benefits or why you perceived that, or why you stated that this would not help Arlington's children.
I will do my best to try to clarify that. So it is my understanding that this additional funding, which goes to the two individuals, then goes to a third party that administers the crisis intervention. They service the counties of Arlington, Fairfax County, Prince William County, and Loudoun County. Those resources go to the total of providing that service for the entire region. It's not specific to Arlington County, even though the Arlington CBS or CSB provides some oversight for that. So there's no guarantee that this helps Arlington County. It's helping the whole region, not specific to Arlington County. There is, the funding for this program comes from funding that the state asked for, federal grant money, and it comes from Medicaid. There are no other organizations who provide any funding for that. As far as we can tell, there's been no outreach to any other organizations, whether they be healthcare providers or just organizations of any of the other counties asking for a similar type of funding to support this program. So that leads to our concern about this isn't self-sustaining. What happens after the five-year increment where we provide the? There's no plan in place that says this will continue on. There's no other support or any request of other support from other entities.
Follow-up?
Please.
Thank you. Okay. So, so thank you very much for that answer. Does that, and I think I understand your concern. So does that mean, though, that you would be open if there were funds that were being contributed from the other jurisdictions, and you would be opening to help fund this?
Well, I-
In some sort of proportional way?
I mean, I think that would go a long way if we saw at the other counties that they sought out, whether it was the other hospitals or other organizations, that they would get similar-type funding from them. That would give us a better assurance that this has some legs to continue on. I would also add that this, I think this needs to be looked in the context of the original requests from the mental health folks. There were four requests that were asked of us, to look at increasing the inpatient mental health beds, which we've addressed and put into the conditions. Also to address increasing our emergency services as it relates to mental health services. And then there was also the request to look at what we could do for adolescent services. And we had told them that we had a problem with being a provider of adolescent service, a pediatric subspecialty. That isn't something a hospital did. And in recognition of that, we brought forth another option, which was to provide outpatient, we have an outpatient substance abuse program. We said we would replicate that into an outpatient mental health program. So we brought forth a option to counter the fact that we couldn't fulfill the one that they requested about adolescent services. So I also think you need to recognize that we also brought forth a substitution for that, which they accepted, but then they added this on as well.
And thank you. I appreciate that. And you consider VHC to be a regional hospital, don't you? Not just an Arlington hospital. That's why you changed your name, right?
It is, we provide services to the region, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Commissioner-
I have a quick question about, for Mr. Ladd, concerning site plan condition 66, which I think has to do with what we're talking about with mental health. Am I correct?
Yes. Page 99.
Page 99. So can we talk a little bit about it? Because I'm a little unclear that the hospital has agreed to request beds, but the hospital doesn't know if it will get the beds?
That's correct. The hospital will request beds from the state, which is the approval authority, just as the hospital requested inpatient beds for its expansion that's being considered today.
Right. They asked for 100 and they got 40-something.
That's right.
Even though they want to plan for 100.
That's correct.
So, explain to me, because I've probably forgotten, so what's our fallback? What if the state says no to the beds? What will the hospital provide from the services they already have? Could they, could they expand some of the outpatient that Adrian was talking about? Where is our fallback if 66 isn't able to be fulfilled?
So I'll address the question as it relates to this condition and the way it's worded, and then I think I'll give it to Adrian as to what they could do or what the likelihood of that is. If it's not approved under this condition, then there would be no requirement to provide the mental health beds. But that would also mean that some governing body at the state has determined that there's not a medical need to provide that. And we as staff think that that's unlikely. And I believe there's also, there's also language in here that, you know, the county manager and delegated to staff, Department of Human Services staff, would have the ability to review that application to make sure that it's a quality application, that it's submitted in good faith. And I think to the rest of it, I'd address that to the applicant.
Adrian?
I'm not sure there's anything else to say. As Matt said, if the state deemed that our request for additional beds was not needed, as they have done for other services that hospitals or healthcare providers have put in, you don't have any recourse other than to come back at another cycle and try it again. As Matt said, what I believe we built into this plan through our discussions and through the conditions is an assurance that we will put in the best possible plan when we put in our application for the request for additional beds.
Well, I think that that swell, and I know that you'll put forth your best effort for the citizens of Arlington, but if for some reason that falls through, I still think it's incumbent that the hospital continue conversations with the Community Services Board and DHS staff about, well, what else could we do? We weren't allowed to do this by the state, but what other services could you provide for adolescents in the mental health realm? I'm not saying you have to tell me now, but I really think you should think about it because you are a community hospital. And I have looked at your 990, and Arlington Hospital has a heck of a lot of money, which is good because that means you're solvent. That means you'll be here for the care that we need. But it is also incumbent upon you to spend that money in order to keep your nonprofit status. And I appreciate that you want to spend the money for Arlington, which is why you're having trouble with the CR-2. I can get that, and as an Arlingtonian, I appreciate it. But, you know, heck, you make almost $3 million off your parking. You know, maybe we could make that a revenue stream to help with adolescent mental health, which unfortunately, I think we're seeing an increase in in this county, as though we are across the United States. So I'm just asking that you keep that in your heart and think about it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce Deborah Warren, who's a deputy director of our Department of Human Services, who's sat very patiently.
I noticed that she was sitting there. I sort of liked the ending I had and didn't want to, didn't want to go on, but you have been here all evening. Please.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm also the executive director of the Community Services Board, so I serve in that capacity as well. We've been, we had a work group with Virginia Hospital Center, Adrian and his staff, and CSB members, two of whom are here this evening, who worked on this work group, Judy Dean and Ann Herman, who's the chair of the Community Services Board. And we met over the course of more than a year on the issue of the behavioral health services. And with regard to, I just wanted to add that with regard to the issue of whether or not we would receive permission from the state with the COPN for the number of psychiatric beds, there was a tremendous amount of effort around developing the methodology to determine the number of additional psychiatric beds needed. And a couple of the elements in there that are really important to understand are the number of, in the methodology incorporates the number of temporary detention orders, that is, the number of folks who are hospitalized against their will because they're a danger to themselves or others. And in addition, the Virginia Hospital Center tracked the number of folks who present for a voluntary admission but cannot receive services because a psychiatric bed is not available. So we've been collecting that data collectively, jointly, and those are two important pieces in addition to showing the population growth and the trends in behavioral health. And you're right, the trends are really concerning. They're, the needs are increasing. So when the time comes, we also, in addition to this work, consulted on a number of occasions with Dean Montgomery, with the Health Services Agency of Northern Virginia, and that's the first layer of approval. He has to approve the application before it goes to the state board of health. And he agrees with our developed methodology. So we feel confident and assured that this is a good piece of work going forward. So I just wanted to add that. With regard to the CR-2, it is a regional project. It's been in operation for a number of years. I actually wrote the original grant to develop the CR-2 jointly with my colleagues in the region. And it's tripled in the amount of funding that it's received from the state. Fairfax County is interested in contributing to the funding for the region, and I think the other jurisdictions are starting to show interest because we all see this as a valuable service because there are no psychiatric beds really available for a number of children who cannot go to Dominion Hospital in the area. So I just wanted to add that. In addition, I did want to point out that on page 100, one of the agreements that was not mentioned is that we did establish an agreement that the CSB work group and the Virginia Hospital Center would meet quarterly on areas of interest with regard to psychiatric beds and other behavioral health services, substance abuse services, and so on. So we have a commitment to an ongoing dialogue. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions? If not, my timeline has been... Yes? Absolutely. If we stay until 11:30?
This is quick. I'm not going to put in an amendment for it because I think it's small enough, but I do want to call out to staff on number 59, the Capital Bike Share Station. We're talking about a 10-year timeline for contributions to that. I think when we have provisions like this in any site plan, 10 years is a long time with last-mile type of transportation, given how many changes are going through that industry right now. We should always refer to it. I would recommend something like Capital Bike Share or other similar last-mile services because I'm not confident really that Capital Bike Share will be in the same format that it is 10 years from now. It could very well be, but I wouldn't bet the rent on it. So I'm just calling that out as something to look-
Well-taken, Commissioner. We could include language Capital Bike Share or its successor or something like that.
Right. Thank you.
I would also like to point out, this is the first time a site plan has included operations and maintenance for Bike Share. So this is a precedent, and we may have erred on the language because we've never done this before.
I mean, it's appropriate to do, but I just wanted to give the flexibility. Thank you.
Are you happy, Commissioner, or do you want to add something?
Just to note that, I guess in light of Mr. Sullen's comments, I'm not sure exactly what the specific context was, but I know that in my service on Transportation Commission, the exact tenor of that recommendation has come up before, that a project included installation of or support of a Capital Bike Share station, and the condition, we ask that the commission, that the condition be updated to note specifically that something might come after Capital Bike Share.
So I think we see some progress here tonight on that score. Thank you very much. I'd like to, I think we really don't want to take a break. I think we want to launch right into motions. It's getting late. So Commissioner Yakimini, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, please. I have a, I had a draft motion that I circulated to colleagues based on public, based on SPRC experience and public testimony that we received on Thursday. And I've actually done some editing on the fly informed by our commission discussion this evening. So, here goes. I move the Planning Commission find that, one, Virginia Hospital Center, VHC, is a valued part of the Arlington community and has provided quality health care to the community for over 70 years. Two, VHC should continue to modernize and expand in ways compatible with its location. Three, long-held planning principles of Arlington articulated in the comprehensive plan as well as the zoning ordinance should be followed for the VHC site. These principles include developing guiding plans for large parcels of land developable by site plan, concentrating the bulk of buildings on a site so as to have the least negative impact on surrounding neighborhoods, and placing parking underground to the maximum extent feasible. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends the county board defer the pending requests for rezoning, a site plan amendment, and use permit amendment relating to Virginia Hospital Center, and direct staff to continue to work with the applicant and citizens on actions that will address concerns of citizen commissions and neighbors, as well as meet the goals of VHC, specifically focusing on the following. One, prepare PDSP, Phase Development Site Plan, for the combined VHC site and Edison site that includes locating proposed and future building massing that transitions to surrounding single-family neighborhoods by placing the greatest heights permitted in SD zoning, which is 95 feet plus, toward the center of the site. And that should be understood as the Edison site. Excuse me, let me send it, the center of the Edison site. Building placement that permits a permeable, pedestrian-friendly campus establishes short and long-term open spaces, designates access points for all uses, manages and minimizes the impact of vehicular traffic on the streets surrounding the hospital site, places as much parking as possible below grade, organizes traffic on the VHC site as much as possible, and provides landscape buffers at all street frontages. And let me just go back and say I misspoke. It should, it should just be toward the center of the site, not specifically Edison, since we're talking about the whole, a PDSP for the whole. Two, concurrent with the work on the PDSP, reexamine placement of the proposed new traffic signal on George Mason Drive. B, reexamine the architecture of the proposed garage to have it better transition to the single-family neighborhood. C, move the tallest mass of the outpatient building more toward the interior of the Edison site. D, lower the height- D, lower the height of the outpatient building so it is not at the maximum allowable height for the zoning category, if it remains on the corner. E, design a break between the outpatient building and the garage to help diminish the wall effect on 19th Street North. F, redesign the pedestrian access point at 19th Street North and Edison to make it more prominent and open. G, enhance landscaping on the perimeters of the Edison site and use predominantly native species. H, ensure architectural details and materials for currently proposed buildings reflect the character of the bordering single-family neighborhoods. I, which is new, continue to pursue with the Community Services Board and DHS staff mental health care for adolescents, including a program for regional cooperation. Three, continue to refine site plan conditions attached to the draft staff report dated August 30, 2018. And I would speak to my motion if I get a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Second to by Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that the structure of the rather long motion is to make it sort of a document, if you will, that can be edited. And we have first our findings. I think it was important to acknowledge the hospital and also to acknowledge our planning, make a motion for the deferral, and then talk about what we would like to see in a PDSP, and then talk about other things to go on concurrently with the PDSP, which is still working to make this current site plan the best that it can be. And then the last part is continue to refine site plan conditions. I don't have any listed here at this point, but I thought that other commissioners might have some changes that they'd like to propose to existing drafts site conditions, and so this would be a place to offer an amendment and where to put it.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you. I'd like to add to Commissioner Yakimini's condition number three. So I move the Planning Commission add to number three the following. On page 91 of the draft staff report, amend the sentence, "This program shall provide transit-transportation subsidy value to each non-driver-alone commuter, walk-bike-transit carpool-vampool," to include, after the word "value," a parentheses statement stating, "including cash transfer for non-transit, non-alone drivers, i.e., walkers and bikers," or similar language defined by staff, "to ensure cash transfers for both walkers and bikers are included."
Before there's a second to that, Commissioner Hughes.
I actually think that we need to second it even for purposes of discussion.
Second.
I second, and I make an amendment, propose amendment to the amendment to change "ie" to "eg." There's a substantive reason for that. It's not debatable, so let's just move on with it.
You can ask for unanimous consent to change.
With unanimous consent, I move to change "ie" to "eg."
Is there any objection? Hearing none.
No objection.
So amended.
Okay. Any additional amendments?
No, we should vote on this amendment, so any additional discussion?
Yeah, call it.
Call the question.
So, let's vote.
All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands.
Hands.
Raise them high.
It's not my first unanimous, guys.
Opposed, abstentions. So that's, are we 10, none, and none? Got it. Are there additional? I actually have a question. Could you reread F?
Redesign the pedestrian access point at 19th Street North and Edison to make it more prominent and open. You're right, that I would seek unanimous consent if I could change that to redesign the pedestrian access point at 19th Street to make it more prominent and open.
No, if there's no, what I'm, what I'm confused about is you've then overwritten an earlier, "Design a break between the outpatient building," or have I missed that? Is that?
No, it could be one and the same.
I see. Okay.
I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
Okay. So you've just recast the way that might occur.
Right, because maybe we don't get a separation of the building, but we still should do more for that pedestrian walkway.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Yakimini, I mean, Commissioner Siegel. I wish to amend Commissioner Yakimini's original motion. I believe Commissioner Yakimini, item two, you have "I" as the last one currently, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I move to add item J to read the following. "In the context of height enassing, principles applied throughout the county to single-family residential edge conditions should be applied to the site. Guidance for how the county works with residential edges can be found in various sector plans, PDSPs, and the Columbia Pike Form Based Code."
Is there a second?
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Discussion? Would you like to defend your?
Yeah, I would like to speak to my motion. As those of us know, I think that, and I believe I've shown in one of the examples, there are many examples to how we address single-family homes throughout this county in varying ways. I can most think of Penrose Square's pedestrian promenade that cuts between the garage and the grocery store. That was a site plan condition, leading to a park that bisected the buildings but connected the buildings at the same time, and that was caught on a site plan. But the Form Based Code has regards to wrapping structures, which Commissioner Siegel mentioned earlier with respect to the garage, and through other site area plans. We have a great deal of guidance and sort of varying approaches that could have been considered for this site that I believe if we were to pursue a PDSP would be great jumping off points, and I'd like to clearly articulate them.
Further discussion? I would just say, I'm not sure I completely understand where you're going with this, but I think that the precedential value here is complicated by other factors. So then in this case, as Commissioner Yakimini has pointed out, we have a very long structure that, butts a very tall structure, that is across the street from, I think it's R-6 district of small and modest homes. I think there are, I am hesitant to set, to try to sum up all of the kinds of edge conditions that we've seen because I think there are too many factors. Is there a forest nearby? How long is that structure you're looking at? And at this point, I'm not prepared to go down that road myself. Does anybody else want to add?
If I may, may speak.
Certainly.
To the amendment. Commissioner Hughes and I had talked about this, and I think that his intent is that in the consideration of this particular site plan as well as the PDSP, he's chosen to put it under things to do in addition to the PDSP, is to think about, are there other solutions? Are there other transitions at the edge that could be used here, other than the ones that we might have already mentioned about stepping and buffering? I think what he's saying is there have been a variety of things used in the county, and he just wants to call that to our attention. Is that correct, Commissioner Hughes?
That is correct, Commissioner Yakimini. The solution may not be the one we think it is tonight, and I hate, architects are very creative people, they're much more creative than I am, and so I try not to bind them, and there are varying amounts of edge conditions that are out there, and many of them are R-6 approaching, and I think that they can look throughout the county and find lots of great pictures and maybe different scenarios, and I was just trying to encourage that action.
So that was the intent of the motion, not to justify a particular edge condition based on the mathematics, based on mathematical distances as measured?
No, ma'am, that's the reason I specifically want to include both sector plans, which have edge condition transitions guidance in certain places, as well as PDSPs, which have different edge condition guidance, as well as the Form Based Code.
Could you then slowly read your motion again?
Soon as I unlock my phone. So this would be number J, under the original, condition two, under the original amendment, or original motion. "In the context of height enassing, principles applied throughout the county to single-family residential edge conditions should be applied to the site. Guidance for how the county works with residential edges can be found in various sector plans, PDSPs, and the Columbia Pike Form Based Code."
Can I just suggest, instead of should be, could be, to me that would clarify your intent?
I would accept unanimous consent on that one.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Guerin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like this amendment, Commissioner Hughes, because one of the things that I think has made working through this SPRC process so difficult is because there are not guiding sector plans for this area, and this idea of referring to other plans and policies that the county has worked on that might inform these decisions seems to be a very wise and accessible way to move forward.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme amend, Commissioner McSweeney.
With the change to could suggested by Commissioner Siegel.
And accepted.
And accepted. I can go along with this for the reasons that Commissioner Guerin has, excuse me, it's late tonight, Commissioner Guerin has outlined.
Commissioner McSweeney.
I'm going to support this, but I do have a point, a question of clarification, because by my, by my notes, that should have been K, so perhaps, no, was "I" eliminated in the, she dropped one, okay. So which one did you drop, Commissioner Yakimini, when you read?
I dropped B.
You dropped B, okay. Thank you. Is there any, any further discussion?
Yes, is there further discussion on the motion? No. Commissioner Yakimini, your lights on, no further discussion? Anyone else? Commissioner Weir?
So you're calling for further discussion on the motion to amend, correct?
Yes. If there are no further, no further discussion, then we'll call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? I think it's unanimous again. There's happiness here. Abstentions? None?
For the benefit of the audience, I think the reason we're laughing is that this is the first time we think that Commissioner Hughes has successfully moved two unanimous motions in a single meeting. We're not laughing because of the substance, which I hope you understand we take very seriously.
So are you saying that Commissioner is, Commissioner Hughes is joining the group mind of the commission generally and taking a positive approach? Well, we do appreciate that. Are there any more amendments? Commissioner Morton.
I'd like to amend, I guess it's letter H, ensure architectural details and materials for currently proposed buildings reflect the character, this is what it says now, I'd like to substitute, complement the character of the bordering single-family neighborhoods.
Would you like to ask consent? Unanimous consent?
Unanimous consent, then nobody objects. It's.
Okay, I ask unanimous consent.
Any objection? No objection. Do you have the change, Ms. Bowling? Following, we're okay? Okay. Any further amendments? Commissioner Weir?
This isn't, this is not an amendment. I wanted to speak to the motion, so I just sort of raised my hand preemptively, perhaps.
If there, let's make sure there are any amendments, further amendments, and are you speaking to the?
To the main motion as amended.
As amended.
So I am inclined to support this. I think that the fundamental question before the Planning Commission, and I hope that the applicant reads me, reads this in all good faith, is that how do we best plan for the most hospital that we can get? Because that's what we need. We need the most hospital that the applicant is willing and able to provide. But I think that the best planning part is accomplished through the use of a phase development plan. My only caveat, and I'm not inclined to make a motion, but I do want to be on the record about this, and I say this as someone who, in so many ways, in the first person, has struggled and continues to struggle with severe mental health issues and has driven to Dominion to visit friends, has contemplated whether or not I need to call the police to protect someone who I think may be a danger to his or herself or others. I know the importance of good mental health care, and I say that as a preface to raising a concern about whether that one clause, Commissioner Yakimini, that I otherwise completely agree with your motion, is within the ambit of our authority to recommend and within the ambit of the comprehensive plan. So I will be supporting the motion in its entirely, in its entirety. I'm not making, I'm not moving to strike it, but I do want us to be mindful of that one particular concern about whether that specific programmatic aspect is really within the realm of the comp plan and the ZIO.
If I may speak to what Commissioner Weir said, and I, in some ways, do not disagree with you. I see that our motions are done in somewhat of an imperfect way sometimes structurally because what we're trying to do is to give advice to the county board on various issues that come before us. And sometimes, when they are interwoven by the very fact that the hospital has been working with the Community Services Board and DHS concurrently, and that we were asked to have Community Services Board at the SPRC table and have them contribute, there is some of a nexus there. But I agree that there wasn't enough of a nexus to make it a site plan condition. That certainly was, would be way beyond, as you say, what our ambit is. But in some way to express our interest in this continuing to be pursued even beyond the, what is in the site plan now as a condition that they will continue to meet, is, I thought was important.
I'm comfortable with that, and I hope that whoever has the opportunity to represent the commission before the board is able to articulate that, should that one particular issue come up.
That would be me.
We have, we have complete faith that you will represent the issue. Does anybody else want to speak? Commissioner Lynn Tellme.
Yeah, I just want to also go on record similarly to say that Planning Commission, of course, is, I see it as the keeper of Arlington's comprehensive plan, and I believe looking at this as a whole, that it does not, in its current format, comport either with the intent of the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance, as has been pointed out by Commissioner Yakimini and Commissioner Weir. I'd like to join my, my, join myself to their comments about that. The hospital is an amazing resource to this community, and we all want it to succeed, and we want it to be the best it possibly can, and I too believe that the best way to do this is through PDSP. I think that'll fit, make it fit best with its community. It's unique because it is in the middle of a residential community unlike virtually anything else we have in Arlington. Because of that, we have to take a look at it a bit more sensitively, and I think we can do that. And I think that this, I think the hospital will be the better for it, the community will be the better for it. So I'm, I will be voting for this, for the resolution.
Anyone else want to, Commissioner Guerin?
So I will also be supporting this motion, and I have a slightly different perspective on the process so far. I do want to thank everybody who's participated. It's been a long process, and we've heard so many positive comments about how much everybody loves the hospital and really wants to see the necessary expansion. And there were some really significant characteristics with this application. The TDM is extremely impressive and very progressive, but the biggest concern for me was the SPRC process, and while I'm not as sure. And while I'm not as sure that the PDSP is the right way to go forward, as the Planning Commission, we are charged with holding these SPRCs as a way for the community to weigh in on an application that's in their neighborhood, and it's meant to give all of us, it's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, as well as including representatives from other commissions who've put in a lot of volunteer hours, transportation, park and rec, it's meant to give all of us and also the neighborhood an opportunity to talk about the application and share information, some of which is very local that none of us might know if we didn't live in the neighborhood or have a chance to talk with the neighbors. And part of the process is meant for a give and take, so as issues are raised, the applicant can respond to them. And our sense was, through the course of the SPRC meetings, and certainly last week when we heard from everyone who's a resident of the neighborhood, with the exception of those who work for the hospital, our sense was that that is not what happened with this process.
Does anybody else want to speak to the motion? I would just say, I too want to just recognize the enormous amount of effort put into this whole process. It's the Arlington way, and you do solve problems through extensive conversation. I've learned more this evening, more, I've come by more details in the give and take and the question and answer than we saw in the SPRC. So that's one point. Another point is, I do think a PDSP will permit a discussion with a long-range view, not a short-range view. That is the benefit of long-range planning, that you have the time to investigate different, different options, different plans, different ways of deploying amenities and requirements of a site. So I just want to align myself with the comments of Commissioners Lynn Tellme and Commissioner Geren, and so that's all I would like to say. I will be supporting the motion. Does anybody else want to say anything? If not, all in favor of the main motion as amended, please raise your hand. Got it. All opposed? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I have a second motion.
Yes, please.
I move the Planning Commission recommend to the County Board that notwithstanding the motion to defer all action, the Board approve a site plan amendment for VHC that only contains the text of condition number 58 in the August 30, 2018 draft staff report that would allow VHC to proceed with constructing screening for the existing waste storage areas.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hughes.
If I could speak briefly to the motion, as, as we all heard at SPRC, the neighbor, the neighbors have, they said at the table, I couldn't, I don't know how longstanding it is, but have, have been in discussions with the hospital about the waste storage area and the loading dock. And, and the applicant in good faith wanted to proceed with having that happen, and wanted to actually do it before we got here this evening, but couldn't, being prevented by our zoning code. So I would think that it would be nice if that could actually proceed.
Very good. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Further motions? We're done? Then I think we're done for this evening. Thank you, thank you very much. Stephen?
Nicole, with your motions, please. Nicole needs your motions.
Appreciate you.